All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School. District School Committee. At six oh five P M on Tuesday, November eighteenth. And we will start things off as we usually do with public comments. If you have joined us online. You'd like to make a comment, please put your full name and address in the comments. I don't think we have any in person comments or?
No.
Nope. Okay. So it looks like Nina, you would be first up if you can hear us. This is from last meeting.
No, it's the new meeting. She dropped off. Yeah, she just picked the Senate six, three, nine.
Uh Nina, are you with us? Well, wait. Just a. Another quick minute to see if she's able to jump back on.
She's having tech difficulties. So.
It was unfortunate.
She knows where to reach us.
She does.
We've got a lot to do.
I do.
She says she'll call in, but no comment.
Okay. All right, with that being said, it looks like we don't have any public comment tonight, so we will move on to our student report with Megan. Welcome as always.
Thank you. Okay. Hey, guys. A little more informal than normal because I'm coming from Campbell's Club, Chicago Tech Week. We have that coming up this week. Um, so first, we finally had our first meeting. It was wonderful. We got to put names to faces and all the fun stuff. Um, out of our current group of eight, four of our members, so half of our members are new, which is new and exciting, gets us some new voices, some new input. Um, but it also means it is a little bit of a learning curve, just like figuring out what we're actually doing and all that. Um, and getting used to talking in front of people. So that's always fun. Um, first, before I get into what we talked about, um, obviously we have Chicago coming up. We also have some exciting stuff going on in the counseling department. They're going into the freshman classes this week to debrief quarter one and start getting set up with like Naviance and looking at our transcripts and stuff like that. Um, all of our fall sports are over, which is very exciting. All the seasons went very well. The only thing we still have for that is our Thanksgiving Day football game, which is gonna be exciting home game. And National Arms Society just had a blood drive, which went super well. So that's really exciting as well. Um, at our first meeting, obviously getting to know each other, figuring that all out. Um, our main topic of conversation was A I use in school and things under that category. Um, at the end brainstorming ideas about like we think for elementary school, middle school, like are there things we have opinions on and stuff like that? Um, but overall, it was pretty good. Main question is, is there anything specific coming up you guys would like us to be thinking about and discussing or reaching out to our peers to then discuss? At our next meeting, um, but beyond that, leadership.
Um, Nene, what is the um, makeup of the student report right now?
As in, like, what grades are people in? Okay, so we have two from each grade. Um. Fairway, I'm still figuring out names. Yeah, it's just two from each grade.
Um, and in terms of how you need a discussion with them. A I was that just like topic of interest, but came out first. Did you have an agenda like an agenda and any of our questions will guide it going forward, which is interesting.
It worked. Was that something Miss Pandara brought up? Or is that something that just came up in talking about our classes and stuff?
Miss Pandara kind of just stepped, stepped in the meeting and did some introductions. We talked a little bit about our purpose, what to do during the year. And then we were asking about things that were working well, things that weren't, and I think it just came.
Think it went from there.
The tangent wasn't necessarily like a specific question, but like then we did have kind of like a discussion pretty much based off of that. So.
Are those meetings still open to us? How many?
Now that we have a schedule.
We can share the schedule and see if we can get reps to those meetings.
Great.
We were very proud of ourselves for having.
No, I'm excited.
Is there anything that they talked about regarding A I that would us staring as a committee?
Um.
Assuming he would have reported that.
He didn't. Some of the stuff we talked about was the idea of like, well, what age would be appropriate to consider introducing A I? Like, is it something that we should go full and restrict it? Or is it something where it's like introduce it and how to use it properly and stuff like that? Um. I don't know if we came to like a general consensus on that one, but I think that was like a brainstorming.
Yeah, just kind of like brain dump.
People that we're using and how they I think the whole thing about should there be a the interesting part of the conversation was when we got on to both in the room that had traditional fairly traditional education at this point and are dealing with what is appropriate as of A I is is there going to be a need in the future to ensure that there is A I free learning so people can face this? So kind of a little philosophical.
It was sounding a little like when adults are like, we didn't have phones back in my day. We were feeling very back in my day, but it was pretty good. Yep.
It's a card catalog. Because what I'm curious of and seeing is that my middle schooler is probably using A I, um, which is twelve. So if you are talking about it as people who introduce skills, they're already prepared.
Yeah.
Um, so one thing I would like to recommend is that we talk more about kind of the way we we, I don't know, we haven't created our students on responsible media use. We assume they're already using it. Not here, welcome to, right? Because then it's a process.
Yeah, I think that's a guidance to my daughter. It's kind of something we were talking about with like the media literacy class and stuff like that, like where does that come in?
That's where, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where it's done from. Um.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What if, has there been any discussion on the cell phone? Tell us, because I never, it would be the first chance to move this.
I don't specifically remember anyone mentioning it. I think everyone's pretty chill about it at this point, like it's not a huge thing right now.
Thanks, guys.
Back to me.
Where can I go?
Back to my regular show. We're on the consensus of youngest.
Yes, we are. Well, actually. Yeah, we can do the consent agenda real quick. Um, and then I'll go back to my chair person's report. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to uh acceptance of the warrants for the payroll vouchers, one zero two five through one zero two eight and payroll as of November sixth, twenty twenty five, along with I think that actually does cover. Does cover it? Wait a second.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. And then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting on November.
Fourth.
Sir. November fourth, twenty twenty five.
So.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And those abstaining? Chase, thank you.
No, I'm state Trump.
No, I'm state Trump. Excellent. All right, so now moving on to my chair person's report, I do have a topic for to address this evening. So over the past month and a bit, the committee has completed our superintendent evaluations. Uh, they've been compiled by myself and Kate, the Chair Vice Chair of the School Committee, uh, and then uh, discussed and reviewed with the superintendent and then sent out for final review by uh, the committee. So did everyone get a chance to take a look at that? All right, fantastic. Uh, are there any questions around that? Or I think, you know, not surprisingly, I think that all of our evaluations were in general relatively in line with each other, which I would expect. So along those lines, uh, you know, I'll keep this short, but I'll simply say that, uh, you know, Ms. Bowden received high marks overall the evaluation. Uh, notably around improvements to the curriculum and instruction over the previous two years and especially you know, around execution against the current district improvement plan and you know, strategic vision of the district, which has been uh, you know, the improvements there have been you know, really fantastic in a lot of ways. So thank you very much for that. Uh, and also say, you know, especially given, you know, the challenging budgetary times that the district has experienced over you know, the previous couple of cycles, I would say that's even more impressive. So uh, again, keeping this short and uh, you know, this evaluation, I believe, is entered into public records that, you know, anyone's able to take a look. Uh, if they're so interested uh, on the public side. But I would like to propose that we move to extend uh Pam's superintendent's contract through the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school year. And along with that, I would propose a standard two per five, two point five percent uh, cost of living adjustment during that period, which has been you know, tentatively budgeted as part of our plan already. So uh, apologize to them. I wish it could be a bit higher, but uh, you know, I know that that you've never received an adjustment during this time period. So you know, but given what I already mentioned about, uh, you know, the budgetary times, I think this would be appropriate. So, so thank you. Um, so do I need to make two separate motions or can this be one motion? How would their favor? Probably two separate motions, I guess.
Let's make a motion to, um, I will move that we extend Pam's contract through is it the first of July or the fifteenth of July, first of August? Which do we usually use?
It could be what depending on how the whole search process lands and when you're bringing somebody in, it could be anything from June thirtieth to August thirtieth.
Are we able to say through the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school year to a date to be determined?
Yeah.
Mutually agreed upon. Um, so I will make that motion to extend her contract. And then we can go into the.
I will second that motion.
So just to declare what we're voting on, extending it through, you know, but what's the working?
The contract, uh, contract.
Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven school year.
The exact date to be mutually agreed upon pending a sort of transition or extension.
Right. So, uh, we'll open that up to discussion. Uh, I'll start the discussion briefly. And just say, you know, after, um, you know, directly having conversations with Kate as well as, you know, I think as a committee, we've also had, you know, conversations around this as well. Uh, a couple of things. One, you know, I personally am thankful for Pam's dedication to this district over uh, the years and her willingness to uh, you know, stay on for a couple of different key reasons. Uh, you know, probably one of the the main ones is that I think this timing will align quite well with, you know, one of the topics that we have on the agenda tonight, which is the Essex Elementary School Building. Um, you know, she's did a fantastic job, uh, shepherding through the memorial school building. I think it's important to have uh, you know, steady leadership during uh basically during, you know, large decisions for the district. Uh, along with some of the nuances in terms of different leadership change that we've also experienced within the district over the past couple of years. Um, and I think that it also aligns well with our committee's ability to start planning for you know, potential transition, what that looks like. And just so everyone's aware, you know, depending on, you know, where we go in the next you know, six months or so, you know, I think I would anticipate at least, you know, starting to explore what it would look like to set up a, you know, committee to look for a potential replacement to kind of what things look very much like. And that would be, you know, towards the end of the spring, probably uh, start those discussions, I think, and the bunch of students. So those are kind of my just high level comments as to, you know, why would I have to?
Just a question on why twenty six, twenty seven and not beyond? That hands up what you said he wants, that because we can't do it longer? I just want to understand what the.
So at this point in time, you know, traditionally, you know, superintendent's contracts do extend longer than them. Uh, you know, Pam has been on a year to year contract for a couple of reasons. Uh, you know, I think one is uh, based off of her personal desire. I think, you know, she's getting close to that time that she's starting to think about, um.
Next steps.
Yeah, what next steps could be? And I think that's, you know, actually none of our business, specifically what those are, right? But uh, in the same way, so she's, you know, allowed us to have that level of flexibility as well, has been willing to work under a contract on a year to year basis. So, you know, with that being said, you know, we have not, like currently Pam's contract does expire at the end of the school year. So I do think it is important for not just our staff, but also our entire district to, you know, know that we have uh, you know, a plan in place. I think it's important, uh, you know, whenever possible to make sure that you have a well thought out and planned transition. And I think that we are very lucky to even be in this situation. So, and that's not saying that anything might not change in between now and then, but that's the reason, reason we'll be on. So.
Uh, I will echo what Chris said. I feel like we are very lucky to have Pam. It feels as though, um, the past couple of years the district is just trucking along and then looking through Pam's self evaluation to remember all of the changes that we have been through over the last couple of years, including most of our administrators. So three principals, a dean of students, the director of curriculum and the director of finance have all turned over. And to us, it still feels like we're just trucking along. I think that's a real testament to Pam's leadership and her steady hand in making sure that business as usual continues despite those transitions and that forward progress is strung by them. So, thank you.
They were benefiting from the team, really. Probably coming, going into COVID and then coming out, really trying to focus on systems and structures that will sustain the changes. Because I think we realized one of the weaknesses, and we're still feeling proud of it, is that everything was very much tied to an individual's way of doing things. Um, so I think we're, we're getting to that point where the system should be able to sustain, even if we do have pickups and transitions along. So that's been an interesting part of the work.
I mean, I don't think and I think I would be remiss to say that any uh you know, superintendent that, you know, does a perfect job. But, you know, then everything that has occurred over, you know, really beginning with COVID and just the disruption to education in general, I think we can all easily simply just look around our community and the state in general. And the position that our district is in versus, you know, so many other districts just in, you know, our local community and the state and in the country. I think, uh, quite a stellar job.
Yeah, that's why my question would be more, why we would extend it for two years? I was trying to understand if there was like a limitation on our part or it's, it's like, and that makes sense to me. So I'm not trying to sway it anymore.
No, it is funny because the conversation did start. I had been on back to back five years and I knew five years and actually the last five went to six years and then here we are. And I knew I wasn't I didn't have five more years. So the one, the year to year with some of the other changes that was going on seemed to make sense. So that's where we're at. Thank you. Move the vote.
Any other discussion or questions? Right, then I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
And then we'll make a separate motion. So I'd like to make a separate motion to set the superintendent's cost of living adjustment at two point five percent through uh the next fiscal year.
The fiscal year?
Well, is this endless or is it just? Just this.
We'll do this again.
Okay, sorry. We're behind. All right. That's what I didn't. Uh, for this fiscal year, which has already been budgeted in our last fiscal, or previously approved.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a couple of details. Is this retroactive if it's already been budgeted?
We haven't hit the mark too many times over the years. You goes back to your.
And what's, what's the go to and from? What's the salary now? Which is?
That two thirty goes for around two thirty, forty, two thirty thousand. No, is that two twenty five instead of around two thirty? And it's very, and with other people, so.
I think it's important to note that that salary is in line with comparable districts and comparable districts.
And also has been you know, kept lower than other administrators and other like costs and that.
Yep, I'm just asking for the, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have this because it's a combination. About dollars and uh.
Um, I'll just echo what Chris said, that I know that cost of living is increasing, which higher than not, than that we were able to negotiate for our teachers to have a slightly higher increase, um, which I think was important and I wish that we could do it.
We've talked, and Chris and I have talked about this, there's just actually a survey circulating today. Our administrators in general have been kept in place. We were, we were, um, almost you know, within a few dollars of immortality. And now they've jumped us and across the board categories, superintendents, principals, in terms of common social. So just something to keep in mind, maybe that was a contract we wanted to share.
And when would we, is that something that we would discuss as our budget?
Talk about the budget. We can talk about, um, kind of the range we might want to get for contract renewals. And I think as we look at some of the numbers, even if starting to think how core negotiations next year, it's, um, we want to, I think we want to double check and make sure that the hourly rate for some of our um, administrators is less than the teacher value they write. Because the number may look a little bit larger on paper, but they have a pretty traditional two hundred and sixty day year, but the vacation and also when you do their, you know, and the expectation of available almost all the time, it's, you know, it's I think we're a little bit of a getting the zone with that, especially as we go out for a little short principle. So that's what I was saying.
They'll be out, it's a good time to have that conversation.
Yeah, definitely. If you start the search process, you want to be aware of the salary we're offering is not competitive. What description? When we were able to make adjustments with some positions that were coming and going, to adjust to kind of what the market average was. But if people have been here a little bit, it's we haven't done that market correction.
Any other?
Oh.
I'll be ready to say the vote. All those in favor? It's also unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Um, there's good suggestions in there as well. I mean, I still, I really love it. There is a date of us and had a challenge. And I think that's what I like most about it and very excited about the team. We're building their capacity and the energy, um, that exists just right, right now to kind of push forward on some of the issues. So um, I'm glad it feels like there's been forward progress over the years, but just really exciting. Um, can't always talk about this building.
All right, uh. So moving on now to our subcommittee reports, um. We, so can we have separate?
This one's terrible thing built in.
That's what I was saying, right? So are we doing, should we like, we called? But we'll do, uh, the fact, the fact is.
Why don't we, I mean, they're away for us. Why don't we go right in?
Yeah, I think everything beyond the Essex Building Project conversations and votes is kind of in-house business, so we can take as much time as we want after the fact, um, uh, the newsletter, chapter seventy, reports and things. But kind of.
So. We will talk to that. Yes, we will start. Uh, our facilities, subcommittee, elementary, you know, facilities of S B C secondary.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, this will be very brief compared to recent reports because we have guests here to present all of this information to us. But just so you know, we did meet on November sixth, and yes, we have throughed invoices for Dornwood Year and for J C J. We had further discussion of the space summaries and the patient plan that we will be discussing tonight. Um, we started looking at criteria for evaluating design alternatives um, using the same process as the first consideration of sites, um, looking first at what could be just conceptually. And then, uh, the team providing us a list of criteria as a starting point and would be S B C members able to offer additional input to refine that list? And that's the process we're in right now. Um, we also have the schedule update. The two things I'll highlight for you guys are community meeting number two is Thursday, uh, at E D S. Um, focusing on where we are in the process of the next big steps. And then community meeting number three on December ninth at Memorial with, um, tours at old schools starting at four thirty, the meeting starting at six P M. Um, and the community meeting number three will be kind of a hybrid of the two, um, accessible here in Manchester. Uh, again, keeping this very brief and we'll let them introduce themselves, but um, our guests are going to lead us through conversation about the space summaries and the educational program as, um, being submitted to M S B A. And then we will take two votes and I, I just can't put them in the other order, no matter what I do. I can't make my brain take them in the other order. So this group will vote to approve the educational program as is presented. And then we will vote on whether to accept the space summaries as presented to support that educational program. I just can't reverse them, even though everything has them the other way around on paper. Um, by way of note, the school building committee did vote affirmatively to recommend those actions, um, that that we do approve and accept, um, on November sixth. Then they'll help us start this conversation about configuration options as well. So should we just turn it over to Christina and let them, let her help introduce the team and get moving?
Sounds right. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Christina Delangelo, project director with Dornwood Year, the O P M on the project. Uh, Teresa, thank you for introducing the topic itself and going through the information. Um, just as a whole with the building committee, we have met over the last few months discussing what the preliminary design program deliverables are, which include the educational program and the three space summaries, which, uh, are in line with our facility or our feasibility study agreement with the three different design enrollments that we have to study during this phase. Um, we have explained that the educational program is what derives, obviously, the space summaries themselves, which determines the square footages that are being, uh, studied with J C J as far as, as they develop the design alternatives to where we start looking at options themselves. Uh, so we're here tonight to ask for, as Teresa outlined, acceptance of the three space summaries to submit to the. Uh, so we're here tonight to ask for, as Teresa outlined, acceptance of the three space summaries to submit to the M S B A as part of our. Preliminary design program as well as the uh, approval of the educational program.
Go right into it. So, alright, so we're voting right now?
Yeah, let.
I mean, does anyone have any?
Sure, questions and then we can go Q and A.
Sure, okay. Are there any, can we, can we go for clarifying questions, or are there any clarifying questions before? So the three space summaries were in. Um, in the miracle sent before, yeah, sent well in advance. So is anybody willing to summer? One who did not receive this information in advance and might be calling in and um, is less familiar with it than those of us who did. Christina, do you want me to do it, or do you want it, do you want me to try and then you can clean up if I get something wrong?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so the two piece, the two sets of documents, well, the ed plan and the space summaries work together. The ed plan is the very long explanation of how we teach, how we organize time. How we um, organize our security protocols, how we serve lunch, we do reset, so it's. All of the things that we do during the day, how we do them and how we may envision doing them in the future, and we try to highlight. Um, things that are facilities related, right, so. The excessive um, repetition about the types of groupings that we do and work with kids is to accentuate that we need both small spaces and large spaces. Um, the fact that we run um, grade level lunches. And we have kids with some sensory issues is to highlight that we don't need any one. Type of space in particular, but space that is sensitive to these needs, so that's what the ed plan is trying to communicate. All of our education and teaching related, teaching and learning related issues. As it relates to space, the space summary is just an accounting of what we have now. And what we foresee needing to maintain the type of teaching that we did. So we have a simple example, there are uh, twelve grade level classrooms at Essex, we're gonna need twelve. Grade level classrooms in the new build. So we put those in the space summary and M S B A gives us the. The square footage that they recommend that we need, and it, and it gives the designers kind of the format that we break the level, so. The, the template is an accounting of what we're projecting for how we do things in the plan. How was that?
That was great. Um, ultimately, there are two documents, well, in this case, it's. Four documents because there's three space summaries based off of the different enrollment itself. But they're requirements part of our submission to M S B A, so they're, they're follow documents that have a prescribed. Um, system that we have to follow through uh, with M S B A and their process.
Think another thing is if you listened to the recording from that um, November sixth meeting. It's an iterative process, so the space summaries now may look different by the time we get to the full design. So that the on paper, we need um. We're, we need a, a library or learning comments type space. What the end square footage is and how it works in the building and whether it's a big open common space that with flow through or a dedicated. That all will get worked out through the iterative process of design, so this is just initial. Um, we're not locked into it, but we do need to show it for each of the three. Case studies that we're doing with the feasibility.
Christina, can you remind us of the timing for when this needs to go to M S B A?
Sure, uh, so we're still going through the alternatives with the S B C through the end of the year. And then we'll be coming back in January to ask for approval of our preliminary design program. We'll be submitting that uh, mid-January to the M S B A. There's no board meeting attached to the preliminary design program um, submittal itself. So we will roll right into the preferred schematic report phase where we take those alternative options, which could be, uh, I think we have six or seven right now. And then we'll further refine those options based off the evaluation criteria that we're currently developing and working on with the S B C.
Appreciate the context, I guess my question was a little more specific to these documents.
So they will, these documents will be included in that submittal that we submit to M S B A in January.
Okay.
And as Pam said, you're approving. The educational program tonight, but you're just accepting the space summaries because the space summaries will change as the design develops. And is further refined through the process.
So why don't we start with a motion, I, I will make a motion to approve the educational program as presented.
Second motion.
Now we can have discussion.
I've got a bunch of stuff.
Well, I'd particularly like to hear from you because you've been through this process before, you were on the Memorial Building Committee, so.
Okay, so um. Thank you all for the work that you've done on this, I know it's uh, it's intensive to put all this together and, and work it through, so thank you. Um, and for the most part, you know, it reads clearly, I, I can see the layout, I can see the justification for things. And the connection between the space request and the educational need, so. Ninety-five percent of it, I, I'm, I, I hear and I'm totally good with. A couple of things that I have questions about, just to clarify where we stand as a district and. Uh, what the public might expect if they look at these documents. So the first one has to do with um, the estimated square footage that results from the space summaries. If I'm reading the, and I'm, I'm primarily looking at the K, all K five, all pre K five in Essex. So just these numbers reference that scenario. If I'm reading it correctly, it looks like. The template that we put together has. Twenty-nine thousand square feet over the M S B A guidelines and twenty-one thousand square feet bigger than the current building. Is that, am I reading that right?
We had this conversation at S B C two meetings ago, and yes, you are, you are reading that right.
I'm all for aiming high, but that seems excessive.
Did, Pam, do you want to handle this, or do you want me to, so I'll give you what I took from it because this was a learning. Uh, experience for me on it, another S B C member brought up exactly that. Uh, and writing the percentages and all the original certain things, so what, what I came to understand from that is that. If we went with the. The straight, the biggest picture we'll get, these are all the things we do. And then use the M S B A template to create spaces for all of those things that, yes, that is where we would end up. But that over the course of time, we haven't gotten anywhere close to design yet, and once we get into. That portion of things, then we're looking at efficiencies, we're looking at designing for efficiency and where some of those spaces might be shared, how might we use. You know, as an example, the, the hallways for breakout space, that sort of thing, and so that number will dwindle, that's my understanding of. The process with that, and so my understanding is that we're not likely to have. That be the final uh, estimate, however, that being the case, there was also considerable conversation about the idea of um. We need to consider what kind of spaces we need now and, you know, out to a fifty-year look. You know, this is a forward thinking, look, and what kind of spaces are we educated in, and our, to our students need for that. Um, so that was my learning on it, but.
Good for you. Yeah, and I would say this is where the inner process. That's where we came to that discussion, because we're in really no different place anymore when we started from what, it started out big. Figure them what we were in and came down as we went through, and we'd have everything from, we had a community center and we reached out. So what we're putting in now is. Kind of the bucket list, everything that it could be, so if you went and you read all the way through to the end of the ed plan, it talks about community assets. And included in the discussion from feedback that we've received is the potential for. Putting a track in a field on that site to build in. Build out our athletics program, support um. Potentially bringing track. Out of a co-op and in, and also trying to reflect some of the input we received from Essex of having athletic facilities there in competitions in town. So whether that fits and whether it survives.
Would that be even re, be even reimbursable in the scope of the project?
You know, but it may. And there, so this is an accounting of what we think we need at this point before it's. Designed out.
I know Christina, you, I was looking for your email, you had sent us a series of statistics about how this measured up to. The, the steps in the process that we took from Memorial School.
Yes, um, typically what M S B A wants to see is that everything that you have in your educational program is supported within the space summary itself. So if there is a need for space and you, if, you know, tell the story as far, as far as why you need that space, generally M S B A. Will further discuss the need for it as well as um, agree whether or not it should be. Uh, eligible reimbursement space as well. And I would say that especially when it comes to special education, uh, square footage within the building. They ninety-nine point nine percent of the time um, deem that as eligible square footage space. So that's why it's so important to have as much information within the educational program to support the need for the space itself. Because that's what M S B A is relying on to understand the square footage of the overall building itself.
Okay, so my second question has to do with um, all the, did that answer your question? It does, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with starting there, I understand why we're starting there, I think the perception. Could be mistaken, like in terms of what we're gonna get and then what we end up with may, uh, may, may be an issue, but. I under, I understand the, the. So my second question uh, has to do with all the language around STEM, science, engineering, computer science, maker space. Media center, library, it's a huge mishmash. And it, it does not come across as coherent. Um. We use about ten different labels for that space. Um, we talk about the nature of the student activities uh, very well, I, I'm thrilled if that's what students are gonna experience. I don't think it exists yet, and maybe part of that mishmash is that that's a forward-looking piece that we want to build, but that's never said. It makes it sound like that's what we do now, even though when you look at like our schedule. We have, you know, two. Areas a week for science, right? So, all the things that we're claiming we're gonna do with students don't look like they're feasible given our current reality. Um, and so, you know, we talked about the STEM lab, we talked about learning commons, STEAM integration. Uh, dedicated tech learning space, we, we mentioned a maker space. We talked about science being taught elsewhere other than in classrooms, but at the front we say sci, all core academics are taught in the classroom. So that whole conversation feels like a. It's almost certainly gonna raise questions uh, from M S B A about what is your actual intent, what space do you actually need, because right now it looks like a whole mess of spaces.
Can I, can I ask, am I hearing right, are you suggesting? Clarifying the language in there between what is currently the case versus what is. Intended, intended to be the case, you know?
Yes, what we want in the future and why we need the space for the future program, even if we don't, but in doing so, in, so make that explicit that that's where we're going. But in doing so, they're also then probably gonna look for, are we putting the necessary plans in place to make that a reality? Right, and that would mean, you know, is there enough time in the schedule, or is there, you know, is the library media specialist the right person to run a STEM lab? Right, if that's what we're envisioning that to be, right, so things like that, PD for teachers if we're doing integration and project rooms and so. Um, and then my last question, um, or actually, I have two more minor ones. One is um. It didn't feel like that uh, community use was talked about very much, it was mentioned very briefly. The um. The extended day is tagged on at the end with a couple new requests, you know, around the indoor recess area and a. Uh, turf field, right, which are kind of wish list kind of things, and it makes it sound like extended day after school program and is a wish list, which it isn't. Um, and like, you know, having town meeting and stuff, um. You know, the infrastructure for that uh, wasn't clearly articulated. So um, maybe a little more attention there would be useful. Those are the big ones for me.
Anyone, uh, you know, John, I know that you're also on the committee, I'm specific.
Not at this time.
Okay, I have a question about uh. Special education specialized programs, we only get into RISE. Almost I missed something, um, are we assuming that? RISE is the only program that will be located at E D S and why are we? Well, I guess the question would be the same regardless.
We have A S and RISE, and yet the intent is to bring RISE back for Essex Elementary, RISE was when. Swing is evolved into RISE and we've had to be relocated because of the accessibility, so. The game plan is to bring RISE back to Essex Elementary, it will need a lower and upward. How do we decide which programs are located in which buildings and? Um, it originated based on where the majority of the cohort. Was stemming from. And RISE originally, actually it goes back to the, that RISE um. Swing was originally cited at Essex Elementary because the more it was not being accessible, but Essex was more. Accessible, so that was the basis of the decision. Um. We want to have it spread out across the district. Um, and have quality programs in both schools, because I think there's a. A spillover benefit to all of the staff and all of the students, right, uh, we would want just put them all in one school if we can.
Well, wondering specifically about um, the Earl program. Knowing that we have um. A more significant literacy gap at Essex Elementary, if we have ever thought about bringing that program. To Essex Elementary so that. Those teachers can be more involved in um, T D and that sort of thing, um, yes.
Forward by, like, what else is big on it?
But I agree, I see, I think that. Having these programs at our elementary schools is a huge um, benefit to our general education students, no matter which school they're at. So I'm happy that we can. Have some of them be back to it, yes.
But we are running out of space at Memorial, we'll do it again, because we have moved so much programming over there because of the impact, so. It will help balance. That's a little bit of what we ran into, we tried to situate all of the fourth and fifth grade over there when we did that. For the building committee, we did a, just a little mock-up of what the floor plan looked like in every classroom was actively occupied. So, all of the building, all of the project things are not. So. I think that the, if we did lessons learned from Memorial School. You didn't anticipate the growth rate of special education needs and the space needs that. Um, and we've experienced that here as well, where we've had to convert spaces that were never intended for classroom use into classrooms to. Are there any spaces at Memorial that either are not used? Or, right, least as intended, that we can burn them? We, they deliberately built in three classrooms per grade level, which is allowed for the, for the, it's allowed space. For the special education expansion and for the expansion of pre. So I think we could have built the four pre Ks and build the four pre Ks because we're leading now into. Using K classrooms to accommodate.
But that'll shift once we have, once we have pre K at Essence.
Yes, unless universal pre K comes.
That's a different.
We'll deal with that in the future, um. So, all of the rooms are being used. Pretty much for the educational rooms, I think to Jake's point about. Building for the future, I think we're still building into having a good vision around the project room. I think we started very slow with something like the hub, but have definitely. Increased our usage and found its place in what we do, I mean, people were used to having certain things and knew how to design for them. So it just, it takes some time to get used to. Used to the new, I think there was just some fear in the beginning around kids falling off the risers, but we did okay, nobody's falling off the. Yeah, so. Yeah, it's, it just takes some time.
I've been questioned, just how often does MSBA conducted the site visit or audit, so to speak, after construction's completed to make sure that the spaces are being used in conjunction with what they. Well, cause what I'm thinking is like, let's say you, you allocate certain spaces for special education and then maybe five, 10 years from now, the pendulum swings and they're no longer in the needed for those purposes. Are they gonna conduct a site visit and dock you for that? I mean, you know?
No, until recently, they just, that was it. When you were done, you were done. But we, we volunteered to participate in the post-occupancy process that they've put in. Cause we had some things to share and wanted to learn from it. So they come in to see what your experience is like. How is the build? How are you doing with the building? How are the systems and and, um, you know, H-back doing? And at the time, we were having some struggles with getting H-back to run. So I think they're interested in learning about guidance that's provided and how the after-build experience is for us, more so than they're willing to audit what we think.
Okay.
Cause I think anybody in the field knows what you know today is by the time we're building the building, it, everything could change dramatically.
Sure.
So it has to be flexible. That's another concept.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to get a sense of like, are they sticklers for sticking with the program that they approved for, you know, funding? Once they give you the funding, they have no authority over us anymore.
I think the, except we're gonna find out if we decide we're gonna start to take walls down at Memorial School. I think that's when we might get into a clawback situation where if, you know, we are ripping out things that we just put in that they paid for. Because we changed our. I think sometimes for us, program can get very granular in terms of kind of the things we're teaching and what we're doing for them. I think it's a little bit broader. Um, in terms of kind of basic concepts, we're not looking for school without walls, you know? I'm not bringing you that kind of out of left field proposal. We're going to modernize our technique. And we're trying to be mindful of what space may need to look like to do it, but I think the underlying theme of all of it is the space needs to be flexible enough to adapt over time because you can just change so fast.
So regarding the motion on the table for being the education plan, I guess my question before we vote is, when we approve, when we vote on this, is a vote to approve limit you from making any additional edits? That, that's something I.
Or I'd like to see some of these edits made, right? Can you do it after we approve?
Is it, is it, is, is it something that we can approve? And you have now taken this feedback, knowing that we, if we choose to vote to approve it, the underlying sentiment, but you've also taken that feedback. I'm happy you need to break.
If you're willing to approve it and I'll bring, we can keep iterating on it until it's due.
That we're approving the, the fundamental.
And, and approving now allows the school building committee to move forward. If we delay it, then we delay that.
Based on what you concerns on, and I hear them, and we'll go back to the team now, so I mean, you have like seven people writing, yeah, it's a little model.
Yep.
I don't think anything we tweak is gonna change
The substance.
The substance of it, or what the designers need, or MSBA needs to provide in the process. So like it needs the cover, it needs, you know, it needs, like there was a chart I just circulated and I had asked Christina, is this something I should add to the appendix? I don't think it changes any of our teaching methodology, but it might add a point of clarity on the distribution of students.
And the same thing with the space summary, if there were a way to lower that just a little bit to be.
Okay, I'm gonna kick that one to that. Can we vote on this and then?
Oh, we, we don't have both on the paper, right?
Right. Just, uh, so, um, if you're taking inspiration for, but not to hold it up or anything. The indoor community space, um, I think that that space in Memorial is currently the hub. And the hub is used as an indoor community space. And we're talking uh, indoor movement spaces, right? And so like when kids are in indoor recess, they're in the hub, that's not, I wouldn't wanna see, um, a hub-like space used as an indoor community space at a new school, because I do think that the hub in Memorial, the way it is used now for indoor recess and whatnot is not ideal. Uh, there's like, you know, uh, games there and there's balls flying around and just kids have disabilities that make it hard for them to get around if there's balls flying around or if they can't see and they, you know, it, it's a hazard. And I think I've heard from teachers that there are concerns about students moving safely around the building. And, uh, I myself have seen kind of the chaos of indoor recess, and this is not necessarily anyone's, you know, fault, and I get why it's there and what the need is, but, um, if there's a chance to make an indoor community space not a central artery, if that, if that makes. Indoor community space in Memorial would have been the gym, which is the town meeting. Not an adequate space for indoor community space because it's an instructional environment. And which is true at Memorial as well. It's like for, are you looking at our, that current ed plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Look at page fifty-three.
So what Kim is getting at there is something like a combined community, a, a room that could be used and signed out as a community room when school's not in session. It could also be an auxiliary space during the day for an indoor recess space or a motion area. And I think some of the early, and this is, we're not even there yet, but the concept would be, can you piggyback OTPT in that room? So it's a multi-level school. The hub.
Said that medium to large rooms.
Yeah, and it made me think of the hub and I just wouldn't, I don't think the hub works great for those types of uses. And so if we have an opportunity to envision a wish list program, a wish list is that the hub does not, the central artery slash entryway space, foyer, whatever you wanna call it, doesn't serve that. But, but you just said makes sense, that's separate space.
This is too specific for now, but for town meeting, if we can put, you know, so we can broadcast and use the clickers, right? It's good, it's a clicker.
Yeah, right. Roll that, right?
Too specific for now, but yes. We can make that part of the building, that'd be awesome.
Can I just add, um, regarding the ed program, we do need full approval of the ed program. And just hearing what I've heard tonight, I would make a recommendation for us to review the information that you provided and make some tweaks and information to that. And then come back to the school committee for full approval, because that does need to be included as part of our PDP submission.
And if we don't do that tonight, will that hold the building committee up in any way?
No, it will not. It's been fully accepted by the building committee as far as ed program and space summaries so far. So we're, we're full steam ahead going through the alternatives now because that's what drove the spaces itself. And to answer your question, Jake, the space summaries will be tweaked from now through the under schematic design. And that's when the space summaries will be locked in with MSBA when the final design is, uh, set with the MSBA.
Yep, yep, thanks.
Okay, so if that's the case, then can I make a motion to table this and, you know, try bringing back from the sec, yeah.
Can we still accept the space summaries this evening, or do you want to wait for both?
Well, can we finish this one? Cause we have one motion on the table first.
Okay.
I will second the motion to table.
Any discretion?
Did it, did we cut it? Yeah, we'll do it.
You go?
Yep. All those in power? To table, to table the motion.
So, okay. So then as a point of clarification, we still could approve the space summaries.
Mm-hmm.
We're not approving, we're just accepting. Okay. And Christina, if we, if we table that or don't do that, does that hold up building committee?
Same, same thing, no. Same as the ed program, because again, this.
I would argue bring them back together.
I would like, if, unless there's a compelling reason, otherwise which I'm open to hearing, I'd love to take them together.
It's up to them.
Primarily because if we're saying that the space summaries are driven by the ed program, but we're revising the ed program, I think it's cleaner, unless there's a compelling reason not to.
All I would offer is if you wanna make it faster next time, there's nothing in that space summary that is a direct in, in forms, but isn't drawn from, right? So whether we need two lower A's and two, a lower A's and upper A's and a lower RISE and upper RISE, yeah. We describe it in there, but it's just, it's going to play out, it's gonna play out, yeah. That's reasonable.
Well, there's no motion.
So we're just taking, so we'll just move it, we'll hold it in second.
Thank you for, uh, taking our input. Celebrating.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, so then moving on to the finance committee.
I, are we doing the configuration?
We're gonna talk a little bit about configuration. Uh, there were a lot of questions that are come up last time. I can throw up the slide just directly. Last time we had started talking about, um, the timeline of this group to process on weighing in and making some determinations around configuration options that we're studying. Yeah. So as a refresher, when we submitted, to MSBA to engage in the feasibility study, we responded to community inputs around taking a third party, let's call it a third party look at, um, three different scenarios. The pre-K three at Essex with four and five Essex students going to Memorial School. The complete merger, putting all of the Essex, Essex and Memorial students in the existing Memorial School, potentially doing in addition a renovation there to accommodate them. And then the third, which was how we call the standard option, grades pre-K five, all of the Essex students cited in the town essence. As we're starting to clear through straight site analysis now, so we, through a first stage, apple street, any other parcels of land in Essex that might be a potential site for a build. It worked our way through that process. We're down now to just two sites, the Essex Elementary existing site and the Memorial School site, both built into our feasibility study. So at this point, there's a physical component and a facilities component that our project team is working on. At, at the same time, there's considerations to be made around pursuing any of those, uh, either of those two options in terms of the school committee's responsibilities under the regional agreement. Um, so that's why we started the inspection here, just to make sure everyone was clear. You're gonna get some facts and figures based on what buildings might look like or what potential costs might be for pursuing these options. From the facility side, we have those preliminary operational numbers that were built into the presentation I showed you last meeting. But, and when we were talking about it, it seems to be kind of, we accepted that there was a tremendous savings from the total merger, probably around thirty-five thousand dollars. And in the pre-K three, it looked like it might end up costing us more on an operational level. So the question started to be asked about the sites, the feasibility of the building option. So I thought, seeing as we had the team here tonight, if any of those questions are still existing or new ones have arisen, this is a great opportunity to ask the technical team um, about, you know, what some of the pros and cons of the site are as they're seeing it now. So I'm just gonna open it up to discussion on the three configuration Q and A.
I'm interested to hear what some of the pros and cons are.
What we found so far? Jeff, do you wanna talk about that?
Hi, good evening. I'm, I'm sorry. So you just wanted the pros and cons of, um, creating the physicals, physical space for the different grade configurations?
Yeah, you know how we started going through our last meeting, some of the options and what they potentially look like on the sites and?
Right.
What it's starting to look like. Now that we're at a point of drawing any conclusions, but just kind of where are we in the process? What are you seeing?
Sure.
And I can stop sharing if you have anything to share.
Um, I, I don't have anything to share right now. Um, I'm just, from a, um, kind of community perspective, I mean, the, the, the most obvious thing is the regional agreement, um, for, for the pre-K, uh, through, uh, K three options. Right? Um, or, or the Manchester, um, full K five. Um, so the, the region, regional agreement factors into that. Um, the space template, um, conversations that, um, you had, there's a number of them because they're based on, on the, um, enrollment options. So that's kind of built into the process different. As the, um, enrollment goes down, the, obviously the associated areas go down. Um, I mean, moving the Essex pop, a, a lot of the, um, considerations that we've been discussing so far revolve around moving the Essex, uh, students out of um, Essex to Manchester. So there's transport, operational considerations. Um, there's, uh, access to after-school activities for an Essex student that's in Manchester. Um, if um, K three remains in Essex and four, five is in Manchester, there's an additional transition for Essex students, uh, fourth and fifth graders that, um, Manchester students wouldn't have. So there's not uh, an, an equity, um, established. Um, you know, I, I mean, there's a lot of operational considerations like that, after-school activity access, uh, et cetera. I'm not, I'm not sure where, where you wanna head, head the conversation.
Yeah, I don't think I, I don't think I phrased, I, I think it's my fault. I don't think I phrased it appropriately. I'm thinking more along the lines of, as you're starting to examine and do some uh, modeling of how you might situate, uh, buildings on the two sites, what are you seeing in terms of the memorial sites, pros and cons, constraints and, um, advantages?
Memorial in particular?
Well, I think that's where most of the questions were coming up last week in terms of, can you even put a building addition on that site? How big of addition would we need? So kind of what is, what are the numbers showing us just?
Sure. So, um, the, the Manchester option in particular, in, in order to, um, basically consolidate or move all the Essex students to Manchester, um, the Manchester building isn't large enough, right? So the differential in space needs is around forty thousand square feet. So that represents a very large addition, even two-story. Um, it, it's a significant increase to these, uh, seventy-seven thousand current square footage. Um, the site is very dense, is very, um, what, uh, with the last project, um, the, the entire site was developed, right? So, um, either vehicular circulation, play areas, the building, um, flood mitigation zones, uh, structured infiltration uh, for stormwater. Um, so, um, the, the addition is, is going to disrupt and displace some of those, um, site amenities. Uh, and that's back to, um, the point Christina made about MSBA reimbursement uh, potentially being, um, impacted by, by a, they'll clawback some of those, uh, reimbursements.
And Jeff, is that in part because we have not technically closed out that school?
Uh, it's a, it's a twenty-year payback period, right?
Yeah, it's called a cost recovery. So anytime you work on a project with MSBA within twenty years, it's based off a percentage of, uh, how much time that you, you know, completed that project to when you're working on your next project. And so when we're, uh, in the schematic design phase, filling out our project budget sheet itself, it's a template that MSBA requires us to use. You have to put in calculations and numbers based off of any previous projects you've worked with them, and it drops a percentage off of your eligible, uh, reimbursement based off of that.
All right, good enough. Thank you.
Um, and just maybe one other, um, consideration, um, architectural consideration for the Manchester build option is that that building is maximized, um, s- square footage-wise, um, to the current building code. So, um, the, the building code allows you to build so far, um, with a building that's sprinkled. It's very technical, but you, you can't, can't build it any bigger, um, without triggering, um, the need to separate or start to divide the building into multiple sub-b buildings. So any addition we'd have to put on would need to be separated with firewalls, which is very expensive construction. Um, ju- just as, as a consideration. So like when, when you in, um, increase the population, uh, now to, uh, accommodate the Essex students, the cafeteria needs to be larger. Uh, now to uh, accommodate the Essex students, the cafeteria needs to be larger. Uh, and so there's a, thank you for bringing up the graphics. So we'd need to extend or build a small addition um, off the current cafeteria because it's adjacent to the kitchen. And that's really the only place that you could reasonably have food service. Uh, that would need a firewall to separate it, which is.
This is the area that he's talking about right here.
Which is very awkward to, to kind of make um, and very expensive um, without blocking egress out of the backside of the hub. Um, the, the, the large uh. Kind of L-shaped addition, two-story classroom addition would also need to be separated with firewalls. Um, and, and actually to get um, as a two-story addition to connect back to the other learning neighborhood past the media center. Um, that one-story um, corridor that runs along the gymnasium. Um, we think the easiest way to get two-story connection is uh, do a, a small selective area of demolition. So that you can um, basically bridge across between the additions. So it's very, it's just very, very complicated uh, and complication leads to cost. Uh, and when, when all said and done, you're going to have a lot of students on one site. Um, there, you're almost doubling the number of uh, vehicles um, trips per day. So the queue right now um, is around, I think, about forty cars need for uh, for forty parent drop. And that goes up to over seventy um, per our traffic engineer. So all the congestion you have on Lincoln Street would um, be increased substantially uh, by almost doubling the number of cars. So there, there's a lot of considerations like that um, that we're, we're looking at.
And you would also need additional parking, which would in this scenario mean taking over the tennis courts for additional parking. And in this area, we would have to get rid of the parking that's uh, currently there. And where this addition is shown is where there's a current rain garden that was part of our order conditions with CONCON.
Yeah, if you go back a slide, they could maybe see the existing conditions.
So this, this is very helpful. Thank you for the overview. That is not sounding very friendly or feasible. How about, how about the uh?
All right, serious like. Are we doing this exercise for people who have called in and may have these same questions? Or are we doing this exercise for ourselves? And if we're doing it for ourselves, does anybody?
But we have to play it through for MSBA, right?
That's correct.
We have to play it out.
So, and, and I got this question from a, a town board member in Essex who was just inquiring like, what, what? Why are we doing this? And the answer is because last. Two years ago? While that, when we were preparing for feasibility, the school committee was receiving inputs. About these potential scenarios being cost-saving and having a positive implication either on the total cost of the project. Or the budget. So they have, in that we should. Carry them through feasibility to get external assessment of whether or not. They would create enough of a cost savings to compel us to look at the regional agreement.
But we're looking at far more than cost savings now. We've already, we've looked at the costs.
Well, I think there's a scenario in my mind, how I've explained it, like this piece here. They're talking like forty thousand square feet plus, right? Forty thousand square feet. If you, I think in the original concept, everybody was going to fit in here and maybe you just needed to tweak a few things. But now you're talking about building a whole other building, right? So if you're just tweaking the building with a few minor additions, maybe it's a fifty million dollar project and not a fifty, sixty million dollar project. So I think people wanted to investigate that beyond just the common sense chatter that we have based on.
So for this scenario, we have effectively done that. So I think Kate's question is, when do we make, or if I'm interpreting a question, when do we make a final ruling on that? Either, either by school building committee or by us or by MSBA.
So parallel tracks, again, um, I think we need to be discussing it in terms of the configuration models and the educational components. And the implications on everything from um, student learning experience, social emotional well-being, community implications. Um, community relations implications and we making some of these moves and the feasibility of actually um. Undoing kind of a core principle of the regional agreement. That's this committee's discussion. Well, this group is trying to give you some numbers to, to consider as part of it. Um, I think we need to play this through, at least through January, and we need to be able to show what this will cost. If estimated out um, so that we can show MSBA that we did our due diligence. So I would think we're pulling up on a decision either by December sixteenth or January thirteenth in August. So this has.
So from a program and operating budget perspective. Doesn't seem to make any sense.
I don't see any educational benefits to this.
Can I ask a question about renovation? Is renovation, these, these are all, um, my impression. Oh, yeah, and most of the space summaries are about rebuilds in some capacity or add additions and new building. Is there, is there anything on the table about just renovating the existing Essex Elementary?
Yeah, we have to show renovation, renovation, addition and new construction options for every one of those scenarios.
Okay, that's what I thought. So there's.
So the renovation stuff though, isn't in the space summary. It won't be, wouldn't be because it's the existing space.
All that does is tell you how much square footage you need. It doesn't tell you where it is or in what configuration it is.
And so what I'm at, the reason I'm asking is. Um, if there are people in town looking for like a bargain basement solution. Um. But it, it would so, in my mind, that's renovate existing Essex Elementary and move. Against the advice, right? But I'm not, I'm not proposing that this is a solution that I want.
Yep.
But um, it's a solution that should potentially be flushed out, right? So that it's all, because it's all on the table for, so EES is in renovate it. Per K through three and then four and five go get absorbed into Memorial as it exists today. Because this is the arguments I've been hearing.
Yep.
And enrollment is dropping anyway. It's all in this.
So could we hear from Jeff about the pros and cons of that option?
Uh, space-wise, let's so it um, Christina, if you could advance to the next slide. So this is that scenario, you know, um, as outlined, we need to look at kind of all these various um. But on both sites, Essex and Manchester, and then all, all the great configurations. And then MSBA requires us to look at a base code upgrade where you can't really change anything other than just making it code compliant. Uh, an add addition renovation option and then a new build. So this is the addition renovation option. Uh, and it's, in some ways, it's very formulaic in that we look at what the existing footprint is, which is fifty-three thousand square feet. We look at what the space um, template is telling us our space needs are for the, to meet the program requirements. Um, that's uh, sixty thousand seven hundred seventy-seven square feet and the differential is seven thousand seven hundred square feet. So an addition of seven thousand seven hundred forty-one square feet would meet your. Um, your space uh, template target. So that's what this is showing. And then we can talk about what's the best way to utilize the, that additional square footage. In this case, our thought is that um, that size uh, aligns. Uh, almost perfectly with a new gymnasium, which would meet the needs of your undersized uh, current gym. And then the, um, there would be a series of targeted internal uh, renovations and. Um, to make the, the existing building better suited to, to meet the needs of the size requirements of spaces, adjacencies, et cetera. That all hasn't been worked out. That would be worked out as we move forward. And, and we, MSBA does require that we carry at least, we can narrow down the uh, enrollment and um, options. But we're gonna, through the whole process, we're gonna have to carry the, the base upgrade, the addition renovation and the new at a minimum. So there's always going to be at least three options to make sure that those um, various approaches are vetted. Um, estimated uh, and so that you have a kind, kind of range of a menu. Uh, from the least cost to the most cost, whatever order those end up in uh, to, to evaluate and to pick from.
And this one model would require change in the regional agreement as well.
The, yeah, this one would, yes. Any, any case, any K three uh, solution does require, yeah.
So Jeff, could you just help? And I guess this goes back to my initial comment about the space summary totals. How can we remove a quarter of our students out of the building and still need a bigger building?
So um, first I'd make the observation that I'm, sometimes there's a, a, an expectation that the MSBA guideline is the number you should be targeting. And that's not necessarily the case because the. The reimbursable square footage isn't the same as the space template starting guideline number. The, the reimbursable number will rise. Um, and, and so. I would, I wouldn't get overly concerned seeing the gap now. Um, and uh, Christina, do you have the numbers handy for uh, Manchester Memorial? Because it, it was a seventy-seven thousand square foot project. I believe the. Our initial guidelines were around fifty-eight thousand square feet, but the reimbursable was much higher than fifty-eight thousand.
Yeah, it was, there was. Like, I had the email up, actually, what I was looking at with uh, what I'd sent to the SBC. Uh, seventy-five thousand square foot was considered eligible.
Out of.
The seventy-seven thousand one hundred square feet of the building.
That, that was built. So this is, this is all very expected part of the process. Um, and it's, it's, it's an ongoing discussion with MSBA to sh- validate or show why. The spaces that are. For the template out, start outside of the guidelines, but they become reimbursable because you've demonstrated the need. So for example, um, at this option, the K five option, um, actually can't go back to.
The, yeah, yeah.
Yes, exciting ones. Maybe the, just the new.
To clarify, these all have pre-K, correct?
Yes, um.
We're actually talking about pre-K.
Yes, because the enrollment numbers, the two hundred and fifty students doesn't include the pre-K students. So two hundred and fifty student is K five, then there's an additional pre-K number on, on top of that. But yeah, it is understood that it's a pre, pre-K through five um, design.
But in part to answer Jake's question about um, if we have fewer students, why do we need more space? We are only dropping two classrooms.
Yeah, so just to be clear, I'm, I'm functionally echoing input that.
Yeah.
We're hearing, right? I, I personally understand it. I think we have to be very clear about the public communication about this, right? Because if, if this is the first, you know, if people go to the community meeting and see this.
Yep.
Right? And you walk out saying, hey, we're building.
So I think.
We, we just have to be very explicit about what's driving this and that we are conscious of. The, the need to make it as efficient as possible. And I know that's hard to do at the early stages, uh, but.
I think one of the problems, one of the, I'm going to own this problem tonight because we're going too far for the school committee. Uh, that's, you're trying to redo a whole series of SBC meetings that have spent hours going through each of these scenarios. So we were very successful at Memorial by ceding the responsibility to the SBC to oversee the process. If people would come to those meetings from the school committee and follow along or, and now you can attend offline. Because there's no way we can replicate a level of discussion that's happening in a two and a half, three-hour SBC meeting. In a twenty-minute session in school. So I think that we just want to be careful of going back to the conversation we had this afternoon. Too many iterate, too many variations on trying to explain things are going to make more confusing. So maybe we're getting too much in the weeds.
It might be.
For this group.
Yeah, I, I mean, did the, there had been questions about, well, wait, how can that even work? But also some of that has been worked through and it's also going to be presented at the community meeting. And so it made it that we've sort of already asked some of those questions and gone past the usefulness of that at this point. But the question that you just asked is the one that's going to continue to be asked.
For sure.
The thing that I'm comforted by in having been part of the process is that it is all numbers. And it is going to be right on tape. And so, you know, how, how could it be more? I mean, that's, that's a much smaller deviation, a much smaller add. Um. But again, we're just dropping two classrooms. But we're looking at a fifty-year outlook of what the space needs are. And we're at the very beginning of the process. So I, I, I hear what you're saying.
And we have twenty people, almost twenty people on our building committee. And we should be pushing residents to outreach to your community representative on the SBC for detailed explanations of what's happening in those meetings. Let them be your experts on this and come to the meetings, come tune into the meetings if you want to hear the in-depth discussion. Everybody can ask questions. That way they were not trying to replicate everything and, and doing only a small piece of it. And we're leaving out so much of the conversation that took place around each of these scenarios.
And I think the answer to some of these questions when we get them, the answer is yes. Probably ninety-nine percent of the time. And encouraging, so if you have questions like, is this being, are we considering this? Why aren't we doing this? Answer is yes. There in all that, if you're interested in learning about it or having input into it. These are all open mediums, you know, that. I think that needs to be our response.
Does that? That's, that's totally fair.
Yeah.
Can we um, can we just hear the second part of the four, five move to Manchester? Just so we know what the impact is on Memorial from a program perspective?
Pam, is, is it, is that a question to you?
Yep. Hold on. And while she's pulling that, I will say, I, I am interested. We started this conversation a little bit at the last meeting um. In, you know, hearing for John and I to be able to take back to the SBC. Here's where the school committee is. Here's the temperature of where things are feeling. It's, it's helpful for us to be able to go to this group that is looking at the numbers and the building and design and, and that aspect of it and say. It seems like people aren't quite sure how much more we really need to put into this whole, you know, one avenue or that sort of thing. And so it can give us, we have to carry certain things through to a completed point. But if we have an idea of where things are headed, just like a budget discussion, if, if we have a trajectory that we're working on, we follow it through, we do the due diligence and we have, because we have to defend it. It all has to be defensive. So it is helpful to hear from the program perspective, what, what are the concerns people have here if we do some of these splits? Because that's not. As much the real to representation to.
One thing I have to kind of clarify is if we align on the educational program. Then whatever solution we develop has to meet that. That's the first thing. And then secondly, we need to look at all the different cost impacts. Where is there an opportunity for savings versus where are their costs? For example, before we discussed a whole bunch of different costs associated with trying to make Memorial work. Either for Essex four and five, or even combining the two schools. And everything I heard suggests to me that this cost prohibitive. But I, you know, we didn't get into a few tenths of the numbers, but throughout a long toss, how expensive it would be because of building issues. To expand the school, we didn't even touch upon the environmental issues and where they are and how it feels that would be difficult to expand. So we talked about all the things that we lose and I don't know if there's even a catch a dollar figure to loss at ten percent point. Partying or if, if, I mean, we need to attach dollar figures to what we can, but also there's other reasons for making a decision. So for instance, there, you know, in forefront of my mind is we have these conversations and there's a real political implication here. Uh, um, taking off my SBC hat, but on my school committee hat only because that's too old. Um. I think that the future of our district cohesion. Uh, runs through this project. I, I don't think that I'm overstating that. I think that for us to come together as a district and truly be able to problem solve. Um, our, our mindset and our way of, of deciding how to handle the every day and every year things. This is key to that actually being possible. Um, to, to have a building in Essex.
Right. No, I, I agree with you there. I'm more trying to react to what I asked earlier today. Right? How did we get into having to consider these things and responding to what some individuals said? And it seemed like a lot of the concerns were more on the financial side. That doesn't mean these other concerns aren't important yet. And so what I'm trying to do is make sure we're addressing those concerns so that we're making that argument as well.
Yep.
And that we have all the data we need to be able to make this all.
I think when we get into estimates of the different scenarios is when, so we have the real, we're, we have these conversations.
Um, because until then, everything is theory. And like you're saying, it sounds like it's going to be cost prohibitive, but we don't have, we're not, they're not there in their process to lay it out for us.
But we're far enough along to see if there's promise for anything or if it's kind of a wash, right? And if it's a wash.
Especially operationally.
Right. And programmatically.
Right. So I had hard copies of those floor plans. And I only have the old floor plans here. So I can show you, I can try to walk you through. I, they're in my closet. I walked out with a stack of them that night and that's it. Again, thank you.
Well, can you give us the gist of?
Yeah, every conceivable space becomes a classroom. So the, we're taking offline. Um,
Bringing grade four, five to Memorial, we've been pre-k three, I guess.
I just, um, I found that paperwork that's those floor plans, Pam, like, oh, you got it? Okay, good.
No, I, I only have the old ones. Do you have the, do you have a scanned version of what I handed out that night by any chance?
I just took a picture on my phone and emailed it to me so I could pull it up on my screen. Just give me a second. Yeah.
I apologize. I didn't anticipate we were getting into that tonight. I would have brought up a stack for everybody to look at. They're old fashioned hard copy because I had to use a markbook and kind of go in and move everything around on an old tablet that we had. I couldn't manipulate the PDF.
Yeah, it's too soon to do a deep dive on these stats and find a way.
No, we're here now. She's got a picture of it. It'll illustrate basically what's going to end up happening is everything gets rotated around, but every teaching space, whether it was designed to be a classroom or not, now becomes a classroom or special education. So the project rooms come offline. Um, tech, I think, goes back into the library. And then you've got kind of we kind of shuffled around what it might look like in terms of setting up those, like what we're talking about is neighborhoods. Um, and trying to propose the four and five upstairs.
So the neighborhood would be split up, like the grade level neighborhood.
You'd have the lower, you'd have K one two on the.
If those would change, but functionally would change.
Basically, the, the math is you would need five classrooms for fourth grade and four classrooms for fifth grade. So you're going to gain back a classroom by taking out K, but you're also going to put over the upper level, A's, upper level, R's need a classroom. So that takes some of the capacity up. Um, you have to be prepared for the other, um, five section grade level that's going to move upstairs the next year. So it, it's not as open and spacious and underutilized as people may have thought.
But, but I guess the question is, does it, does it necessitate an addition?
It might necessitate some tweaking, but you're going to be overcrowded and there's no place to put anything.
Right. But even with all the pre-K, we wouldn't have to add pre-K classrooms or anything?
No, because you're moving two pre-K over two.
Oh, right, 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 right. Yep.
So really you're swapping two, kind of two classrooms.
Yeah, okay.
This is the main level on the screen.
I don't like how that, that sound.
I think what we don't know, and I don't know how much they'll be able to figure out is what's the impact on the CAF? Because you're, I think the population is going to be just over what the design bill was at three thirty, looking very close to three fifty or three sixty to be in there. I just have to look up my numbers. Yeah. So I think some of what we saw was the right, like RISE four, five. So RISE is going to have handicap needs. So they're going to have to be on the first floor and they're going to need a big room with a bathroom. So you're already, you're going to have to have a four, five classroom on the first floor. So they're not going to be with their cohort.
Wait, is, is the second floor handicap accessible and?
Doesn't have a bathroom. The, the K classrooms have bathrooms in them and they need, but they're a lot options. So the, listen, this is like, this is what it could look like. This is not like.
The, the bottom, the bottom line here is it becomes very crowded.
Very crowded, no expansion space. You're so thinking about MSBA in the program, project rooms are offline. Um, and you're using basically every available space just to accommodate.
I guess I'm wondering why this doesn't push us to some sort of small addition? If we have no more special education spaces or not adequate.
Addition to Essex or Memorial.
Well, more, why wouldn't, why wouldn't the compass to some sort of small addition?
It could, but that, that would be outside the scope of the MSBA project and it would have to do that independently.
Okay, that's.
Yep. And there would be clawback at the time.
That's the answer.
Potential for clawbacks of struggling.
But how are we doing that with the big addition for the K five option?
Back for the MSBA project.
The MSBA's, the three configurations is.
I, I still don't understand how we came up with this middle option. It makes no sense to me in any, in any perspective, program, anything. So I'm, I'm not for programmatically, budget-wise, I'm not for.
Us are, um.
That just makes no sense.
Educationally, politically, or financially invested in, um, the.
Doing more than we need to in this.
But just for clarification, the way, the way it came about is that in those conversations over the couple of years, the things that were repeatedly brought forth were send them all to more memorial for both towns. I'm not saying any specific, you know, cohort. Send them all to Memorial and shut down Essex if, if that's a problem to, to, for schools. Or why are we going to build a full, send some of them over to Memorial and just build a much smaller school? And that, that came through repeatedly. So that's how it ended up in the SOI and now we're stuck with it.
I understood, but why would you then limit not? Why would you not then consider the potential of a small addition in that second? It just, the whole scenario makes no sense to me. So.
Because MSBA, it's, yeah, MSBA was clear that they're only, we're signing up to study options to address the needs of the Essex Elementary Facility. So by picking the PK three option, that splits off the four and five, your solution to the pre-k to the Essex facility is building a pre-k three facility. So, so we could, in, assuming we would choose that, because you could easily put the four and five not educationally, but physically put the four and five over there. That's a misconception that we're trying to dispel, right? Because it's, it, enrollment conversation has been driving us and there is not enough space to fit them and use the building as it is.
And even though those are currently through students who are housed at Essex Elementary, they would no longer be covered under the MSBA pro, project because.
It's not, it's not students. You covered them and we made a local decision to segment off two grades and, and put them in a different space that is already existing in our district that we could utilize. Like, let's say we had a vacant school. You know, we could, we could choose to populate that school with some students and still ask MSBA to renovate. Right. Yes. So it's just something we would be taking on.
I think that's very helpful and worthwhile for the community to hear what it's like to, to essentially stuff students into Memorial to, so that it's at the gills, that, that that's an important consideration when looking at these models for all the students that would be involved at Essex and Manchester.
Maybe a way to simplify is to say we would be moving, taking out. You'd be ta, you'd be adding four classrooms and only really taking out two. Actually, you're adding.
I wouldn't even get into the numbers.
Yep.
But just, yeah, just.
Over, it's over the building to pass. What, 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 what it was built for, what was it? It's three sixty versus three thirty.
I have that.
The design, what it was designed to be built for.
Well, for specific elements of the building, like the cafeteria or something like that.
Oh, yeah.
Building could hold all the kids, but not do all the program work that needs to be done as we.
Not designed to serve that number of kids. Other questions? I feel like Jeff, I can't tell if Jeff's trying to talk to us. He's talking, and he's not on mute. Could you at least give me a thumbs up if you're trying to talk to us? But maybe now he's frozen.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Sorry about that. I was just going to clarify, the Manchester Memorial project, the design target was three hundred and thirty-five. That's, that was the space summary target. So all, all spaces are, are um, projected for the, for that capacity.
And I think we would go up to moving, moving needy students, students.
That's not happening right now.
We're at three oh six.
But there is, there is, there is also a separately, a maximum number of bodies you can have in the building, right? That has nothing to do with the educational program.
I agree.
Right.
Well, and that's some of what we started talking about when we were doing some catching. And this is very low level planning, which is you might be looking at going back to where we were prior to the memorial building, which is we couldn't get all of the parents necessarily. Like if you were to combine them, you're definitely going into shifts for, uh, concerts and things like that. Um, we might be up against it too, if we're creeping up into the three eighty, three ninety mark where you can't get everybody in the building and on the site for the, you know, for the holiday concert or for the play. Um, so they just might have to go back to some of the old methods of splitting things up. So it doesn't do the entire purpose of going through and dealing with the crowded building, um, when we did it.
To sum up what I'm hearing, let's bring back to the SBC though, I'm curious. Would it be safe to say that committee understands we have to see this through, but there would have to be something really compelling financially that we don't see right now and that isn't coming out of what's being reported right now?
And programmatically, and right now it's like both programmatic, programmatically it looks like detriments.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is to overcome what we are already seeing as programmatic detriments. There would have to be something so compelling that it would, we would have the choice to look at a whole different way of thinking.
I think that's a very fair assessment based off of the conversation we have had.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the record, we would, using today's, this year's enrollment, we would go from three oh six to three hundred and ninety students. That before, if we were in the.
Grade four, five.
Just four and four.
Can I ask, what is your next school committee meeting scheduled for? Is it December second?
Yep.
Okay. Is the plan then for us to reconvene, review the comments from the program and then come back to that meeting for the votes necessary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Kind of be a lot shorter.
And I would say this, for this group, um, I have, I will circulate my response. Alba had had a couple of questions. She went back to a couple, you know, I wasn't very successful in, in bringing and communicating the history and some of the common sense that you said about us here now. So I think we're stuck going through this process, but she did bring up that, didn't we go through an entire process to determine that none of these scenarios are acceptable to the community? So why are we here? Um, and we did, but there was also frank conversation at the school committee table that, that was a long time ago and was really not. It wasn't accepted anymore, at least by people who were providing feedback at the time. So that's why we're here. Um, because I think my answer, you know, my honest answer to anyone in the community asks, it would, it would have made sense to create a unified school at the time. Um, with the facts at the time, you're looking at the student population in seven hundred. So I think that was a concern. But people were also very clear that keeping schools in their own communities was extremely important to each town. Um, splitting into an actual, like if we were actually going to split and do a pre-k three, four, five, or two, three K two, then you could really have some interesting discussions around some of the educational merits and drawbacks of that. But this is just not either of those and people were, it, it had no interest at the time in having their kids, especially their youngest, not be in town. So I'll share that past worst report with you again. Um, and that was all done by school committee members and in a lot of public conversation. So I think there's history behind the decision-making and where we are now. Um, and I think the feedback that we're getting now that it's an open conversation kind of.
Can I make the request though, when I hear you say, I'm hearing from, I'm hearing from, you know, Pam said, please forward those, refer those, have them send an email to us because those emails out to the SBC, people are welcome to come and make public comment. The community meeting is the perfect opportunity for all of that. But emails as well, because I can't quantify what, what we're not ready to. And so, um, if people, if, if people have input that they want to share, then they, it would be really great if we could refer them to share with us so that we can share it with the SBC for that exact purpose.
And that goes like for all types of inputs. So I would, you know, potentially suggest if we're looking for, you know, additional public input around any of these topics that, you know, we potentially, you know, suggest and or reach out to people that would. You know, because again, I, I think some of, uh, these questions have stemmed from uh, different leadership in our communities, which isn't always the same as our stakeholders, you know, all of the residents, people voting residents and taxpayers of the community. So you know, it's not necessarily a bad, uh, thing to have more people submitting input around specifically that, supporting one way or the, any option they would like to, you know, like more.
And for what it's worth, I, I think that probably most of the people who, who have, who had been in touch and been really are waiting to see what we find out. This is very early. We're still working through this. We don't have all the final, final numbers because we're not hearing, well, this does make sense that people, those people are smart as well and, and are waiting to see what is actually brought forth.
Of course.
Yep.
Can I share one, um, uh, piece of information I got from last night's Essex Select Board meeting that is not about just specifically, but is about the, uh, timing uh, for, uh, the bond vote. Well, we have Christina and the team here. Um, the Essex Select Board, uh, uh, looked at the proposed timing that, that you all, uh, divided. Uh, and they understand the, the rationale for it and they want to pursue it. They just wanted an opportunity to play out, uh, scenarios for, um, uh, how the, how the bonding and the spending works. Um, so, you know, first understanding from Michelle, like what is the borrowing strategy? And then how does that play out with, um, other bonds that are rolling off and whatnot, just so they understand the timing? You know, recognizing that, you know, we may need more than one voting opportunity, right? So they just want, they just wanted to have a conversation about how to do that. And I'm not sure what the format is. I just wanted to convey that's what I heard at the select board meeting last night.
Andy reported that to us today in the communication.
Oh, good. Okay.
And before I put that, I talked to Christina this morning and said, can we find some time once we're, we've got our big submission in to start to look at what funding will be necessary after passage? So we can start to model some chunky of lots.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And the way it works, um, the way it worked last time is basically we'll get together with the two town administrators and start running some models. Um, we usually will involve financial advisor on that, but we are, we are borrowers. So we will need to put that funding plan together with them, of course, and, uh, all the votes happen here. After we get the debt approval. So maybe next month. Yes, that's on everybody's radar. That's one something we report. That's one section we report.
Okay, you're right.
Thank you, Christina. Jeff.
Yep. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on, um. The final subcommittee and. We did not meet.
No, I think you have. Do you have any chapter seven?
Um, so I will say, um, I went again, part of the reason I went to the Essex Select Board uh meeting was because they had a discussion about the draft letter that we all. Renewed. And by the way, thank you for your input on that. Uh, I hope you saw the changes. Um, based on based on. Session, even though I wasn't here and edited it based on that. Um, so from the Essex Select Board perspective, uh, they're good with it as is, including with that um. C D Y, the kind of a bill of due pay statement. They understand if, you know, if the majority of us uh don't go with that, they are going to submit a letter to their to the state rep, state reps. Uh, you know, with that in it, you know, separately. Um, so. I do think we we need to come to a decision about if we are going to move forward with it uh relatively soon. We have until the end of December. That was a clarification that uh we got recently. And I know we're still waiting on a few details from Michelle and Pam about like percent increases on special education and that kind of thing, but. Um, you know, we can get those filled in, but. I we just, I'm not sure what our timing should be, and I'm not sure if Manchester is uh taking a look at it either, but.
That's mine. But if we're soliciting how the Essex leadership feels about our draft and how we want to make sure we have.
Yeah.
To and.
Yeah.
But you, did you get input from Manchester?
They're they're good with it as it is. Uh, no, not from Manchester. Uh, sorry. I got an M S. Yeah.
Right.
Are you asking about Manchester? I have not heard from Manchester.
Manchester has not considered it.
Okay, that's the answer.
I can piggyback on chapter seventy. I I'll chunk out my report. Just to let you know that um. The North Shore Regional Superintendent did their own letter and had a ref going to the online meeting tonight. Because many of us had a couple of meetings that we need to be with echo very, I think, similar points, just a little bit more. Which we boiled down. So uh, Justin from Penn Tucket will be representing us tonight, kind of going over a joint statement that we'll submit, but we just did that. We basically told them chapter seventy is outdated. Property values do not equally ability to pay, and it distorts people's perception of that. Um, and we're asking them to tackle the special education funding. Variable. Also, healthcare is included because that's another outdated variable that's hanging up particularly regional school districts, municipalities, if it's more than town side. And just. Kind of as we're going going through this, nobody can explain chapter seventy. There's the obvious logic behind it. It's so outdated and so complex. Nobody really gets it. So I think we've taken the position that if you can't explain it, it's time to. To change it. Uh, so we don't have to get into it. You've got the letter. The letter basically says this in a different way, but. We're hitting them. We're trying to hit them from all sides. Um, there's also Adam meeting. There was K Bank Caucus. Alba was there, time to stretch though as well. Bruce Tar, the projection is this is not going to give us any relief this year. It likely is a two to three year process. When it comes out of D C. They'll make their recommendations to legislation that. So, but there's a thing we shouldn't be talking about navigating.
I will say one thing I heard from the um M A S C conference. Uh, everybody's very down on. The potential of the legislation legislature doing anything. Uh, and as a sign of that, one of the one of the kind of liaisons to the legislature said. The number of um. Potential ballot initiatives is skyrocketing. As part partly as a reflection of frustration with the legislature not acting. So right now there's something like forty-four potential ballot initiatives. In line to be reviewed or and or approved, so.
Related to this.
No, not related to this, but just as a just as a. Don't hold your breath too long, you know, for the legislature to have.
And there's another one, right, that's pending that would. Potentially uh accelerate retirement. Um, for some people, which it's a win-win. People buy back years of service they didn't buy into that retirement plus program early on. Um, keeping a lot of slack about it not being communicated probably. Anyway, long story short, that would. Accelerate retirements, which would help to bring down a lot of communities payroll. Um, I'd open up positions and kind of keep that. So there's there's a meeting this morning, and I think that for sure, times they have their own. Series of concerns that they're dealing with it. They're part of it with advocacy or that balance trying to move. With the teaching force. So I think there are a lot. Something else you want to say?
I'd say, um, you know, it was my first time going. I know I'm not sure when the last time we sent anybody. It was, I think, before any of us were on broadly. Um, I found it very. Affirming in a sense, hey, to know we're not alone in all these issues and to have. The discussions we have with our towns exactly in the same way, like even getting the same questions. Right? So we're not alone. Um, but it was helpful to hear how other people are dealing with it too. Uh, I think one thing, you know, everybody's looking for more funding. There are multiple districts and communities that are on their third or fourth consecutive override. Um, that seems to be a trend that's coming almost for everybody. Except for maybe the largest urban districts, which tend not to do that. So. Yeah, it was. It was very helpful. I went to a session on overrides. You know, people were. Couple of them were way more organizing than our efforts have been. Um, but. They only talked about the first time, right? Not like the second or third time, how it changes. So that'll be an interesting conversation to have with people of how do you? How do you evolve the messaging as you continue to need that kind of thing? Some stuff around um like district and community partnerships. Um, so it was interesting to kind of see. I went to a session on, you know, the district hired a chef, right? And doing interesting stuff with their cafeteria. So. Uh, anyways, it was. It was interesting to hear how different districts are are playing with different different aspects of the approach.
Can I tag on to that? Just to say for those who don't have two or three days to be able to go in the middle of November, which is what has helped me back every time.
Yeah.
Similar experience in terms of outcome, like with sense of camaraderie, but also good to see how other people are handling things from day on. And that's a one day commitment, and that comes in the spring. So when you get, you will get mailings about this from M A S C. Um, it'll seem to me, et cetera. Lower barrier entry in terms of time.
Yeah.
And everybody does different. We could go as a group. Like there's a whole contingent that write down.
Yeah.
And they do planning sessions and we do goal setting and. Make an event of it. Um, so we can, we can make it. Anybody who wants to do. Do we have that date or when will we?
For the day I know.
Probably usually. I was cheap. It's uh May.
Did was there any mention of a potential impact from dropping federal funding?
Yes, quite a bit of consternation about the federal. Uh, scenarios, yes. And I think Pam's mentioned this, right? You know. There are districts that are much more reliant on either funding than we are. Uh, so they're particularly worried. But yes, it's it's a big.
Because I wonder whether I I didn't see that in the statement, but whether we would want to get mentioned as a weekend.
Uh, the reason it's not in the chapter seventy is because that's literally state funding. And so, yes, our financial situation may be impacted by that, but it doesn't. Chapter seventy doesn't help for federal. Dollars at all.
Yeah, not not really that, but I was thinking, um. You know, it says uh state funding and assumptions, including that on this chapter seven, there's squeezing towns and school districts.
Yeah, the federal is as well.
Exactly. To just throw it in as something else that's in the backdrop.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying I expect the state to do something about it. I know, but. That's basically my first.
We don't need to vote on this right now?
No, we want to wait to hear until we're from Manchester and then we decide as on whether or not we want to submit it ourselves and or jointly.
You know, and they'll pick it up.
Before the end of December, hopefully.
We have a meeting on December.
Moving on to.
The latest draft.
It hasn't changed at all since I last sent it. So, but yes, I can reset it.
It's still got X's and Y's and.
Yeah, we're waiting for.
This priority between Essex and Manchester.
Yeah, we're waiting for Michelle and Pam to give us some of those specific numbers. Yeah.
The more specific. More specific better.
Yep, yep.
And if I want to propose any edits, do I send them?
You can send them.
And copy Pam. So make sure you're sending them. You make sure.
You should send them to me. Uh, she's. Just.
Oh, in case there's more than one person. Yep. All right, send them to me.
I don't make those rules. I I just want to make sure I follow.
Yes, yep. No, that's a good good reminder. Thank you. What if you put it on the drives? No, okay. Then it's considered deliberations. So, yeah.
Negotiations team, they thought we'd sort of probably. Wait until. Wait until we're established with policies of. Big report or two.
Yes, we're missing John, so should we?
Is the movement break?
Sure. Take a two minute break?
She won't be doing my reporter, which is probably.
But it's already after eight already. We still have budget discussion.
Still.
Mine is quick and. Somewhat repetitive. What do we think of real this thing for getting there? I just try to need to have a business conference next. So.
Do you want me to just go through a few ones?
I have a stated agenda inside.
I'm not faulting anyone. I don't. I don't have a ton.
So I I can just go slow and then we get back.
What have you got? But just go.
So I should order.
All right.
The policy and advocates or policy and communications. Subcommittee met today. Oh, we had advocacy subcommittee met today. We reviewed the regional agreement and the process that we would all we need to go through reporting to the agreement to change that document, given the different configurations. That are on the tape, the. That are on the table of the school building project. Uh, we reviewed two sections, three and thirteen, where. It states pretty clearly that there should be an elementary school facility in each member town. So. That was a kind of first pass and we will keep that. Document. At the ready, reference it into in the coming months as we move forward with these conversations. Um, we also reviewed and approved the November twenty twenty five school committee newsletter for. Consideration by this committee. Um. I don't know if you want to project it, Pam, or if everyone saw it. I think you should make a approval to approve it, or you want me to put it up or?
Let's let's move forward.
Okay, so I moved through for the committee to approve the November twenty twenty five school committee newsletter. What's that?
Any questions? No, we're putting them. All those in favor?
Sorry. Don't give me that look. I'm having a hard time envisioning who our audience is. Who are we writing for?
Excuse me. Well, I can answer if I ask that question, then we said we're writing.
I feel like I could answer a big question till I'm blue in the face. So I'd I'd actually like to have other people on the committee take ownership over answering some of these questions because this is ultimately. A subcommittee document and it's a that the subcommittee is putting forward and it's. Was reviewed by a subcommittee. So the subcommittee is putting it forward to the general committee and the general committee is the voice of the general committee. So it's actually our document. So we can share your.
Where? This is intended to go to the communities of that sense, like Manchester. So it's going to those two parents, students, teachers, but also those who don't have kids, you know, residents who. In these towns that do uh are being asked to vote and approve our school budget. So it's going to be in the initial. Then I would add, it's also intended to call out information that may. Be of interest to voters who may want to then participate in meetings, whether or not so maybe don't have time to go to all the meetings and don't have time to read. Like seat materials, but we want them to know enough so they can say, oh, this is where I would want to get involved. Okay, I understand this ultimate story. Is that fair?
I I would agree with everything you said. Great, thank you. Our last school committee newsletter had two hundred and sixty-three views, so we don't know necessarily if those are individuals or. One person looked at it two hundred and sixty-three times, but I have a feeling.
I would do.
I have one that would been posted over and over again. Uh, I like to think that that's. More people engaging with the work of this committee and pulling the work of this committee out into the community than there would have been without the exist. Letter, and I hope to see that number keep going up. Um, and I hope to see public comment and public engagement continue to go up as a result of getting this up and out there, I guess, to be determined whether that actually.
Um, do you feel, I know that we had sort of um. Had like a cursory. Conversation about. Separating policy and communications. Do you feel like load? Is manageable with them together? And it's partly a question. Also, so there she is.
That's that today. And the consensus was, yeah, it's it's fourteen. We expected that presentation. We think last time. Or her time, because a lot of our discussion was more about. The tone, the length. How we cover things. And as we are more aligned on those topics, we'll be less than need to discuss it. So Pam today said that she thinks. In the future, we'll be expecting ten minutes of a subcommittee's time on this.
Great, um.
Is that fair, Pam? And I would.
No, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, but that's what I thought you said.
Yeah, yeah. You say now the initial. Motion that we had approved was for Lindsay to write the newsletter for. You and her to convene on the. On that.
Yep.
And then bring it back to us. Now I'm feeling like it's the subcommittee that's doing it and that there's an initial workload was more than expected, so that maybe. With time it will not be.
And then I would say with time could definitely. Get tighter. And I think there's value in it. Like there were four people looking at something and saying, I'm reading it this way. Oh, I see it that way. And we could do perspective checks, and I think you just get to a better result to bring to the full seven. Otherwise, I think it would happen here. Either I'm going to be too conservative in my outlook. Or not see something. Yeah, I don't know. I think it's helpful to have a few different sets of eyes. But that's a concern we can. I would give it a couple more rounds and see see where we are.
Yeah, no, and that's just kind of what I'm checking in on is how the process is adapting and. If it's sustainable.
I would like to see a separate communications subcommittee, but it does not seem that that is on the table at this time. And I agree that it would be. Why still let this play out a bit and see? See how it evolves and just give it some time to breathe.
So we need to vote uh. Smith, so I'll make a motion to submit uh.
Are we doing the special ed one also right now? Are these packaged doing right now?
They are not a package deal. I think.
Say, are we to prove?
Right.
To approve this on a special education spotlight document is not um. Being put forward by the subcommittee and was discussing the subcommittee. Um.
That's fine. We can. I was just clarifying what I'm voting on.
The the statement on the spec, the the access for the public to the special education spotlight and the statement on special, the special education presentation is included in the November. Newsletter in the in the very first paragraph. Okay, that's what we decided we wanted to say about it.
Any other additional questions? All those in favor. That's the end of us. Thank you. The negotiations team did not.
If you had heard, we're having a community meeting for the Essex. Elementary building project uh Thursday night, Essex Elementary School Cafeteria, six P M. Another one, another one coming up on December ninth. That one's going to be at Memorial School. These flyers are all over the place.
There'll be a zoom link for that.
There will be a zoom link and there will also be childcare. We have recruited. People to do some babysitting to try and make it easier for.
There will be a Zoom link and there will also be childcare. We have recruited people to do some babysitting to try and make it easier for people to get it. Um, just very quickly, um, just some positive things. Shout out to, uh, the dual plant and our students. They put on a wonderful Veterans Day assembly. Thank, uh, Lindsay was able to come. Teresa was there as a parent and school committee member. I guess you're both there as parents and school committee members, um. But, you know, proud, proud mom of the moment, you know, loses that the kids are so well behaved. Our kids are really, they, they. They do the right thing ninety percent of the time. They're kids.
Right.
Um, but the, the kids who performed, uh, the, the vets that joined us, it just, it's a really special day. They put a lot of part into it. Um, and just wonderful opportunity. So thank you guys for coming and being part of it. And thanks to the dual and the kids, uh, for making it happen. Uh, and then a big thank you to the Spalding, um, the, the Spalding Education Fund. They had a really successful night on Saturday night. Um, a lot of fun to see kids and parents, uh, doing their thing. Um, and entertaining the whole community on top of it. So that was a wonderful event and it culminated with, um. A premiere, a preview performance of, uh, it was the old Razzle Dazzle from Chicago, um. In Chicago, it's opening, yeah, they were, they did a great job. It's opening this weekend, so three shows. There's a dressing person tomorrow night, Friday night, Saturday night and Sunday afternoon. So if you've got the time. Come on out and see them. They're going to put on a great show. Uh, I had a community inquiry between our last meeting and this meeting, um, just follow-up questions from a board member in Essex about. A P classes as it relates to sections. Uh, I'm not going to read it all to you. It's all here, uh, but typically. The information request comes from a board member. I like to share it with you before it goes public, so I'm kind of trying to tie it all together and do it. Um, in one easy step. Just some questions about the number of singletons, um, some of the.
Sorry, a, for, an Essex board member sent you an information request.
Wasn't an information, it was just a friendly question, follow-up question.
You used the word information request.
It was a request. No, no need to risk. It was really just kind of some follow-up questions on, um, that big section report with specific. Uh, interest in A P courses, so.
I see, since we're interrupting.
And it was sent as an individual, but this is a courtesy report out. So, yes, and also gave me the time to pull it together. Um, yeah, so this is not a formal information, anything. It was a question that I thought this would be a quick, fast way to share it with everybody at one point in time. And give us a little bit of time to collect the information. Um, so essentially the questions are around A P, number of singletons that exist, seventeen A Ps are singletons, um. Uh, how many A Ps have fewer than eight students? I think Julie pulled this information together for me, so thank you to Julie. I think it's what we, a more detailed version of what we reported in the section report, that the things that we're seeing coming in under eight are things that we are actively trying to promote. Or keep in the program because we've identified them as areas of value. So example, um, French and foreign language, something like physics. Um. And then there was some interest in the scores as well as how many kids were taking multiple A Ps, so. The data is there, the scores were reported in the assessment review. Um, so happy to do more on this at a later date if anybody's interested. But you talked about that, we talked about all that, and we'll be ready to do a budget.
If we get, like, community members and board members who are questioning the value. I strongly recommend we would like some basic of, um, about law, like, you might start to talk about the value of.
Any other questions up there? Thank you.
We talked budget projections.
We should continue the business, separate, separate budget plan and.
Think Michelle is still with us, but I know she isn't feeling well, so I will do just an initial. Run through and then if we have specific questions, but remember, this is what we're. Tentative budget's coming up, so we don't have to do tentative budget level discussion tonight. This is just a preview for you of what we are estimating. And plan to use when we build the tentative budget document. Next week we can get to you on Wednesday for your Thanksgiving. Very much pleasure.
Awesome.
Um, so what we're seeing right now is initial reports out from Maya to their. Clients is, you know, so that's Essex and Manchester are gearing twenty percent, plan for twenty percent in healthcare increase. So we plan to carry a twenty percent healthcare increase in the tentative budget. I know Michelle went through, uh, and did kind of eyeball. Uh. The payroll and, uh. Salary master for next year. We know our cola number is two point five and we're estimating. Uh, meter steps, that's T As and teachers at the cost of about hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. That's assuming we're carrying forward. Um, same level of staffing this year, again, very early projections. The non-uni, union poll, we will hold the two and a half percent as we have in the past years. We are assuming out of district tuitions at percent based on, um, state notification. Cannot think of the official number of the, of the department that does it, but they oversee tuitions and they, they're telling us to plan for three. Three point four percent inflation. Right, we do know some, um, private schools. One is projecting the thirty-six percent, right? There's a whole special process, not necessarily one of ours, that they have to go through and hold a hearing on to do it, but they are pretty much. Um. Pretty much able to, to move their tuitions as they will, but the, the overall number is three point four. We don't know of any wild cards right now, so we haven't built that in. Um, transportation, we are going out to bid. Um, this year, so we are building in a ten percent increase. It's been five years since we formally gone out to bid. Uh, utilities, I know we did a lock-in on, I think it was electricity. I mean, I think it was electricity, she can clarify, but she's projecting four point four percent at this point, so that looks to be something that's kind of working in our favor. So at this point, a total budget increase of one point eight million from the key drivers. Um, and we're assuming another hundred and fifty per head for chapter seventy, four hundred and sixty-six, an additional revenue. So I have put in my notes to you that it looks like. If, with these assumptions, if they hold through budget season, it could be somewhere in the six percent range. Six to seven percent range. Of this year, of next year over this. Way too early to put that.
You know that one?
Oh, I did.
Pam, does this help with the new middle school principal, like it's?
Yeah, it just assumes everything, so. I think we'll try a new phrase. I mean, we're basically trying to maintain the effort that we put in. The effort toward our, um, strategic initiatives and, uh, district improvement and school improvement plan objectives. Maintaining the same level of staffing and I, and I know it's like, we're sat, it's, we want the same level of staffing, but not everybody maybe return to the exact same thing that they're doing now. So, that once, you know, Allison gave you a pretty detailed. Um, explanation of how she goes about building her programming from year to year. She'll start from zero and build up. So we may be able to come down a position in one school, but need to add a position in another school. So right now, we're just assuming flat staffing for next year and that's a good, okay, so. So, these are the assumptions that are going to go in with all of the principal. Um, requests and requirements and get turned into our tentative budget for September second.
What about the whole language program? I mean, it's now starting seventh.
Starts in sixth, we're going to reinstate that by the schedule. Blend that with state, that saves, yeah, we're assuming nothing. I'm. How do you say, nothing is? We're going to try, things will. Things will evolve, but we are going to try to maintain the same level of program for that this year.
This initial total budget, like we do every year. Uh. aims to, uh. Find efficiencies. Right, at the same time, you know, potentially looking to address, you know, some initial gaps that we might.
And we're not even at that point yet because we haven't sat down and put this into a natural budget. These are just the assumptions behind. These are your large drivers before we even look at things that we would like to try to.
So to be a better way to put it is, this is literally just an estimation of. The fact that we have a high level estimate of things like. Transportation that are going to be going up, uh, you know, above what we would like to see. Right, uh, and healthcare going up above what we'd like to see and, right, so. Give everyone basically a, a very, very high level. Percent of what we are going to be dealing with, like a very high level starting point before we can even start to discuss. Any of this. So Pam, do you have? Does special education services out of district tuition, three point four percent is high, but that doesn't feel like the kind of numbers we've been talking about.
That's just the tuition, that's not the heads. The percentage increase in disparate.
So we, but you're, but what you're saying here is that you're not expecting a significant change in the numbers.
No, I'm not saying. I'm saying at this point, we're expecting just tuition alone with existing students to increase it.
So I guess the question, if this is budget drivers of things that are going to increase, are you expecting that a new, another line may be coming around? Numbers of students needing services that will increase this? Obviously, so we don't know.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Kind of referring to the, that last year we had like a twenty percent, the state approved twenty percent or something crazy increase for. For like private school. Or is this a separate?
No, I, I'm, I'm saying that, you know, we're making the case in the chapter seventy letter that special education services have been skyrocketing, right, percent-wise? But not, not for this year, if this is, if this is the key things we need to be worrying about.
In other words, you're saying it's not a driver.
If, that's why I'm asking, is this, is, is, you know, how inclusive is this list, I guess, right? Or, or have you made a determination that that's unlikely to be a driver next year?
Right now, Michelle is reporting that the state is telling us to plan the three point four percent general tuition increase. Period. That's not our particular special education population, location, or students. So we have about twenty this year, we could have thirty next year, and then three point four percent maybe just as existing tuition increase, but then you've got. Make it increase on top of that.
Alright, so we should put a place folder on, on this list is what I'm hearing.
You're never going to know that list. I mean, we're going to project now and it's going to change in the spring and then it's going to change again.
Understood, but do you, do you not have a sense of scale?
We're going to, we're going to, yes.
Totally understood, totally understood, but if we're, if we're.
Again.
If we're just dealing with sense of scale here.
Although anything above two and a half is going to be a driver on, as if, if that's the conversation that I'm getting, working with as base. These may be wrong. These could be all wrong because it's just based on what we know today. This is what we're going to plug in. We're not trying to tell you that this is where it's going to land. Healthcare is what we're hearing right now. It could be thirty percent by the time we get to the actual market season. Right, because we're getting some feedback right now based on the calendar year healthcare. Once we get into January, we'll see what it does, so. This isn't a budget, this isn't a. Set in stone, this is, comes with all the caveats that tentative budget season comes with, which is, these are educated estimates. Based on past trends and what's being discussed in subsequent.
Pam, in your email, you asked, which strategic priorities and improvement efforts do you feel are essential to preserve? So is that going beyond, um, essentially maintaining effort, starting to say. You know, we can start with, we're just going to continue what we're doing now. Or are you asking, well, is there anything you would not do to be, was one of the purposes that we do in addition to what we're doing now?
I think it's more of preserve. This is a little bit like the memorial consolidation of memorials, but there's enough indicators pointing toward the fact that it's going to be a budget that comes in above. Three and a half percent and it's going to be a struggle for us to figure out how to manage that number. So should we get into a discussion of strategies on how to manage it? What are some things, you don't have to have the answers tonight, but start to think about, start to, to inform us on. I, I would say something that I had in mind with that or something like, eventually this, that's, it could lead to a discussion about, well, can we reduce some personnel? I would say we have committed to. To having, um, coaches at the elementary level, that that is something that I would work to preserve in this budget. Even though we might have to have some discussion about scale of that. That's a forward priority. It's a process in motion. We're getting into the year where we're hoping to start to see some gains from the efforts being put in. I think we're starting. Area now, like, we've just been building the program. So if we can get to a maintenance of effort budget, that's some, is something that would stay in there. It's not brand new, but it's newish and we just started building. So I think we're looking to preserve that. Um, so I'm just thinking, I'm remembering discussions, including when I attended Essex.
Um, meetings last year, we're very lean, right? We could take away the world language program that we re-instituted, right? That there's not a lot, there's no fluff.
Well, just to clarify, the language program is neutral cost. Because it's an exploratory in sixth grade, so it is using, by aligning the schedules, we're able to take that. Part-time position and then you should take it from a, all right, from a. Staff member who is a full-time employee of the high school, right?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm struggling with where do I start saying, well, this we can do, right?
Right.
Because we've had that conversation.
You know, we're not, we're not.
Question in the affirmative, like, you've already, you've come out and said, middle school principal, we're, we're committing, we weren't committing to that, right? We don't see that as a source for savings this year. I would say coaches would be another example of, and I feel bad picking on any position right now, but I don't.
Yeah, I would say that those roles are actually investments and that they're financially smart investments. Because they save us costs further down the road. I would say that instructional coaches are going to save us special education costs. Further down the road, but I would say that a middle school principal is going to save us. Costs in terms of other administrators who would need to then support teacher evaluations and, um. Uh, discipline of students and all of that administrative work. I don't think that eliminating. It's, it's putting on, it is a short-term solution for a long-term problem.
We need to, we're going to need to be creative, we're going to come up with some. Of those innovations or new ideas about how to solve some problems. Where are we?
I'm just going to ask, um, funding strategy. If I remember correctly, our reserves are likely to be right around a million dollars. Is that right?
Was reserve use as revenue? Or was there?
Balance. Right?
One.
That's low? Okay, so one point, so I got.
Five percent.
We just did this last meeting.
I thought it hurt one million.
I thought, I thought she said that too. We'll start five percent of the decent point five, right? Something you remember in your mind.
No, it wasn't, no, it was actually in the draft. Uh, Michelle, are you there?
I am here. Um, the estimated E and D is one million. The, um, current balance of the stabilization fund, I don't have it up right now, but I believe it's almost nine hundred thousand, so. One point eight, one point nine million combined for reserves, but E and D was just about a million.
Alright, so we're better off than outside, okay.
But our target is eight percent.
Correct.
Based on previous policy.
I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, strategy-wise, is. I mean, last year we basically, but as much as we felt comfortable to it and then asked the towns to cover the rest. Um. You know, our, our thinking at that point was, we can't keep doing that because the reserves are getting down. Uh, I guess what level, especially with the building vote coming up. Uh, I guess what level, especially with the building vote coming up. What level? You know, are we reasonably comfortable setting that, you know, at a minimum? And I guess.
I think that's something to think about till we start to get closer. To what actual numbers might.
Yeah, and if we're calling it maintenance of effort, then it would be the exact same amount as this year. I mean, why is it free?
So basically, we already are at point, what was the number last year that we?
Six hundred?
And then a hundred and fifty of O P E V.
That's seven fifty. So. This, you know, we've already concluded. So again, last year. Probably both worked, right?
I understand, what I'm, what I'm fundamentally, what I'm fundamentally getting at is.
Seven fifty.
I, I actually, what I'm fundamentally getting at is. What is our capacity to use reserves to get that percentage then? Right? And it's, it's based on both the amount we have, how much we, you know, we need to commit. And how much we additionally might be able to commit. And still have a reserve that does not harm us.
The policy is eight percent, like how do we land on that policy? We're at five. What are we at, five point six, seven percent?
We're in no, we're in no position to add.
From last year, right?
We're in no position to add.
So what, well, I think, I think it's premature to start putting numbers on, I think we should build, I would recommend that we. We will build the tentative budget, paying for the amounts used last year. And then if you can debate and give us some direction if you want us to take those down.
Again, I'm not asking for specific numbers, I'm asking for a sense of scale, right? Is it even going to be possible? To put enough reserves to get to that point? That's, and if you're saying yes, then that's very helpful.
The combination would make something down a little bit. Um, looking at O P E V as a source.
So that was my question is, I know we were going to talk about, uh. That further and looking at. So I was trying to craft the tentative budget.
Yeah, and silly at all.
My, my input is trajectoryally. That I would really like to minimize antagonizing our community by. Having to bring forth personnel cuts that don't come from an educational perspective and come over with budget compensation. As much as possible, if we end up that, so in order to do that, I would be willing to entertain. Looking at different levels of reserve use, the continued conversation about O P E V. And, and what the balance is for that, um, and also other things like. If we are continuing to talk about, uh, this sort of thing. Bringing forth conversations about class size, not talking about a number of sessions, but if we are cutting teachers, class sizes will go up. So to me, that means we would need to look at our targets for. Class size and determine whether educationally, that's something we can bear.
Yep.
That matches our program, so those are the kinds of things that I'm looking for in terms of trajectory. That, yep, the broad enough kind of, yes.
How do we deal with a cut in federal funding? I believe the number I've been hearing is five hundred forty-five thousand dollars, so it'd be through reserve use. You might be too late, I'll keep it, we're being different. Great compliance issue, I would not. I don't foresee that happening, especially around I D B A.
Which is the best area, but we have.
Yeah, the title one is relatively small, we could hard figure out a way to make that a, a different way. Um, I, I'm just thinking, I don't want to think out loud. Without being, I, I think. Once we put all pieces together into the tentative budget, we'll have a better sense of a couple of things, so I, I. I think we could weather a year of I D B A, I don't think we would never get the I D B A money, I think it would be delayed. And I think the state would step up to backfill to a certain degree, what percentage we would get of that. As a backfill or backup I N F L, um, it would probably be similar in principle to chapter seventeen, how the district is upon, so. But that would create a lot of. Okay, I think it would be a lot of.
Other thoughts? Transportation number, uh, the gap in the circuit breaker. Special education transportation, that was just the transportation, it's like the, okay. And, uh. I'm assuming there's already, but last year, there's some problem. Collaborative transportation model, we do, we haven't recognized any.
What about the, like, leasing the vans?
That's one really good.
Yeah.
Is there any calculated cost savings on the vans, Michelle?
No, I'm not sure. I'm not sure specifically what, I know we're getting a lot of use out of them, and I need to touch base with Kami to just double check where the savings has been.
Are they like parts somewhere in fact? Like, I haven't seen them all.
We don't send you lots of.
We have like a big, like hornet or something, you know, like.
Sticker, um, that banged on the side.
Okay.
You can have Florida license plates. But also, I think that's too big.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, one has a Florida, one I think has a New Jersey plate, yeah, they're out of state. We have magnets on the side of them.
Michelle, I know you're not, you're under the weather. Any comments? I mean, did I butcher your numbers completely?
No, 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 thank you, um, I just want to reiterate that this is. These are numbers we put together just this week, we are getting more numbers in from special ed and the principals and directors, um, later this week. Which will be in your tentative budget, um, that is hopefully the high level mark, assuming that health insurance doesn't go too, too crazy. Um, so we're working on some things, I, I almost. I don't want to say I regret bringing this to you so early because I do want to let you know, you know, things as much as possible. But really, we can't speak to them too ten, too, too confidently until we, we put the full tentative budget together. And I know it's really just around the corner, but it, it's going to take a lot of work. So, um, just stay tuned, in two weeks from now, we will be going through the whole tentative budget.
In that three point four percent tuition increase, that's just from, I, I, O O D keeps wanting to come out of my mouth, but it's the department.
The operational services division, the O S D. And that's just their approved, um, inflation rate, they then have a. Mechanism where a school can, um, get higher rates and reorganize, reorganize. So it doesn't mean that all of the schools are going to be at a three, four percent rate increase. We also need to look at our enrollment, and that's something I'll be working with Allison in the coming days.
Maybe we're not seeing coming around the corner that you're hearing it, um, really throughout.
I bet you haven't heard also.
It's going to be a challenge, but we're up for it. And I do think it's important for us to think of Essex as a contributor to a long-term. National, as a settlement project, is a particular to the long-term operational health, because. If we are going to take the step of using some reserves to support the budgets for the next few years. We need Essex to pass, otherwise we're really getting ourselves into a jam, because. What we're able to put off, knowing that.
Um, can I just raise one other issue, which is the healthcare?
Yeah.
Um, a community member that I've heard from that I'm encouraging to email the entire school committee. I've already encouraged that, don't know, I'm assuming, I, like, I haven't heard an official email from this person. Um, but probably is not alone in their question, which is. I think there's an easy answer, but it's just on us to communicate it, and the question is why. A teacher, it has to do with teacher contracts and teacher healthcare and. Teacher healthcare packages and why are teachers not getting reduced packages in order to not affect. The educational impact, in order to reduce the educational impact on kids. So, um, I haven't answered that question because I've directed the person to email the entire school committee and school committee chair. Um, but that would, is a, I think a question that is floating around the community. That it would be, prove us to answer and explain contract negotiation cycle. Um, and the fact that you're shopping out brokers, right?
So we've got, I think you've answered that.
Yeah, I think we've built that.
So you're, was, was the general question. Why are we not exploring?
Going back to association table.
Paying more for health insurance, so it hasn't been back.
Yeah, but if teachers only would pay more for health insurance. That, uh, this, the kids would be less affected by that healthcare increases.
So essentially, if the teachers would take a pay cut.
Um, that, that by implication, yeah, is. But also, but I, yeah, I mean, you can, you can argue, like, that's teachers taking a pay cut, which I don't want for our teachers. But also, we can explain about the contract negotiation cycles to the community so that they understand. You know, I personally want to keep our teachers happy, they're amazing, I don't want them to feel like they need to fight for anything, right?
So in general, the right answer to that is that we are positively thinking about. All options. And all options have personal costs to them. But we will consider, you know, continue to do so.
And also, I mean, it's very, very early. But by tentative budget. Hearing, we can start to put up and move over any F A Qs that were relevant from last year to this year for a general budget F A Q. So I know there's a very long one that explains all of the. Um, collaborative, the collective bargaining implications and that it's not a you're allowed decision. That everyone can basically vote, you know, they need to vote to affirm any changes.
And also that F A Q, if I recall, has the history of how, of, of what our teachers, uh, you mean, has already. Gone through in terms of renegotiating healthcare on what cycle. I just pulled it up off word of you.
So. I don't really want to respond to this, I want the school committee to respond to this person, I want the negotiating.
Well, it's first my idea, it has to.
The.
They have an ass.
No one's ass. So should I respond to this?
I would push them to Michelle. So she's the.
Okay, I'm going to forward this to you anyway, so that you know the answer. Even if I knew the answer, I really, I really want the people, want people to email the appropriate body, like, I'm not going to answer these.
Yep.
But I appreciate you sending the information, and I'm not in any way advocating. A teacher's take the pay cut or that their healthcare get reduced.
Yeah, yeah.
Representing what I'm hearing in the community. That the community, it's not coming forward through official channels, but as a representative of constituents of the community. What I'm hearing, and I think it proves us to address, lays the groundwork to make our jobs easier down the line.
But I just think a very fine level answer, like I suggested, would be very appropriate. You're just talking to someone on, whatever, you know, like walking down the street or, you know. At any point in time, you engage with any community, a high level or sort of like that is very appropriate. If you'd like more information about it, please.
It is okay to answer questions if you know the answer to a question.
Right.
It is okay to answer the question, people ask me questions all the time, I absolutely answer them, and I, I would hope that's the case for all seven of us. But if, if there's more information wanted, then.
I heard earlier that we, that we want all. Communication to go through the general committee and to the chair and see, like, if we hear things concerning the community, I heard earlier. That that needs to go through official channels, so I'm hearing, so this is another, I'm hearing two different things. And it becomes difficult to move forward by, one part of the meeting. It's, it's one thing is that this is, this procedurally, this is how we operate, and then later in the meeting, procedurally, that.
So if it's one, so just clarify, if there's one person asking you a question. And you know the answer, I don't know why, like, yes, of course, give, like, provide an answer in this conversation. If there is a co- community. Outrage. About that question, so we're getting repeated questions, we've all reported that, that we're hearing about it on the soccer sideline. And in the line at Crosby's, here, there, the other place, and now. We want to put out. A overall comprehensive answer to. That issue, then that needs to come, that, that needs to be a committee. Provided response because it's going out to the general public through a form.
So it's also the policy of study, any written, you know, questions, you know, should. Be sent to the chair and we respond as committee, right? So, then it didn't, that was a little different.
Okay, so again, I'm hearing two different things.
It's not two different things, a conversation in line at the grocery store, if you're comfortable having it, have it, because.
That's not where we are. Yes, I hear you, I'm happy. I mean, it was via email, and it was, and so, kind of, like, it was via email. And so my response was, I encourage you to email it to your school committee.
Was it to your school?
No.
Can I give you a?
We can take this offline, like, I, I think it's a new member question, and I'm happy to.
Appropriate question, and what we haven't done is reviewed our operating norms in a long time. And it's totally a perfect question, and especially if you feel like you're getting two different conversations in the same meeting. Like the S B C conversation, send it to the S B C, send it to the S B C, send, understand that. Um, the norms that we have been operating under are that if an email comes in to the full committee, addressed to the school committee. That the chair responds, that's, that's what we have been doing anyway. As a suggestion, but not by way of, um, rule. If an email comes in to your school committee email or to your personal email about a school committee question. And, and it's not to the whole committee. And you wish to reply, it's a nice thing to C C or forward to our chair. And vice chair to give a heads up. It's a nice thing so that they know what's going on, um. Or to loop in the person who is, so for instance, if I had a negotiation question come to me, I may say. My recollection is X Y Z, but I'm C C and Chris and Kate here because they're the negotiations team. So, there.
When I respond to the person.
Yeah. Thank you.
I would say that these, like, bigger documents that we're putting out are in response to when we are hearing the same question over and over and over again. But in order to determine that, we need to hear the question, right?
Well, that's why I raised, like, that's why I raised it, but then. You know, I hear back. That perhaps it shouldn't be raised here, it should just be forwarded to, you know, that it should come to the general committee, so. That, that's helpful, it's helpful to get this clarity, thank you.
Only complicated, but anything that has to do operationally, like, I would say healthcare, that should land in my box. Whatever is going to be explained should have Michelle as well, because it's a technical operational answer. If it's a philosophy question. Or a, uh, policy level question, then it certainly is a purview of the school committee, but. You know, the, the details of collective bargaining in the contract, that, that's something needs.
Regional, Pam and Michelle.
Like, anything even about the school, it should be back to the principal. Like, if people aren't, like, they says.
We, we're not emailing principals about that.
No, no, just encourage them to call, you know.
Yeah, you can encourage people all day till you're blue in the face, that's all I've ever done. But it, it's really easy for people to email me back, it is intimidating, I think, I don't know why. I assume maybe they're intimidated, or maybe they just don't want to put in the extra effort, I said, maybe just forward your email to the school committee. If that hasn't happened, you know, it's helpful to know.
You can also always offer to forward, like, hey, do you mind if I forward this email to the.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be effective to basically. Or straight to.
And there's a lot of gray area. Here.
I use your discretion the way I at least.
I feel like part of the uh. Gray area and the confusion is that. The communication is not necessarily not. It is not always necessary for the communication to come from the committee as a whole, but we need to be mindful of the fact that we are speaking for the committee as a whole, whether we intend to or not.
So I think this already falls under in school community comments. So the word is sorry, that was great. And we'll also be speaking some.
On the budget, there's nothing left.
We're good.
Right?
No, it's just sharing and information gathering and kind of a. Some of the biggest lovers would be challenging this year.
For my school committee comment, I wanted to thank the Spalding Education Fund volunteers and the amazing work that they did to put on an amazing show. I wanted to thank all the performers. Who put themselves out there on stage and were amazingly talented and brave. And also of sponsors and the businesses who put their um. Their values forward and helped fund the event. I also wanted to acknowledge all the moms in Mambo who are putting their bodies on the line, literally, like, don't be caring about injury. After injury, Mambo is our flag football team. And so thank you to the participants and organizers and sponsors of that event as well. Um, those are two I'm hearing about, but there are others. I'm sorry if I missed it. Mambo's Tuesday for Thanksgiving.
We have the order yet coming, just in case. Last year, then. Old muscles and red brains.
I guess along those lines too, I just like to, you know, congratulate all of our fall sports teams for their accomplishments this season. And uh. And I guess also just with our entire team, we are happy and thankful that it's given. Uh, and I think also it's like the power of games, I don't know, I understand. Like that started around the Greek year.
And then we all.
And should not have a budget.
Exactly. I was gonna say, I would thank Mrs. Gruffalo and Mr. Icegol and rest of the. Your staff, everyone who's helping with the play, because I know they're working really hard at it. I'm intrigued. My youngest has volunteered to do makeup, but. Just gonna see if she doesn't.
There's a lot of amazing things to call this district all the time.
It's a fun place.
Yes. So anything we can do to make sure the community is aware of some of these fun events that they'd like to attend, even just for ten minutes.
Not just people in the district, anybody in the community.
Right. Let's.
Super, just reiterating. Great. Motion.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.